All right, it's 6:02. So the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 5th, 2020 is in session. We have some opening comments. The Nahat Fire Department is seeking applicants for the position of Call Firefighter. Tony, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, we, you know, last year, we made a big push. And we got four excellent new Call Firefighters through this. And we're looking to restore, you know, hire a couple more as well. For anyone listening that wants to spread the message, now's the best time to join up. A lot of the classes for the academy are actually being conducted like this through Zoom. So instead of having to actually drive up to the academy during the week, you can actually participate by Zoom for most of the stuff. And it's a great opportunity to get involved in the fire department. And if you're interested, please send an email or call the fire department or send an email over to Chief Palumbo at D as in Dean, Palumbo, P-A-L-O-M-B-O, and nahhatfire.org. Or Lieutenant Doyle at D as in Dave, Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E, and nahhatfire.org by the end of the month.
And just in case anyone didn't get those emails, Tony, can they send it to you and if necessary, and forward it to Dean and Dave Doyle?
Yes, we posted it today on Facebook. It's also on nahhat.org on our website. And again, you can call the fire department too if you're interested. Anybody there can take your information down and share it. But it's a great opportunity to get involved. And we're looking for, you know, Call Firemen as much as possible. So thank you for your consideration.
All right, another notice is about the Bolton Board at the entrance of town. This is the Bolton Board across from the bank. This is a, you don't need to have permission to post there. It's for you to express your freedom of expression. And with that comes, you know, you might see that someone's posted something that you don't personally agree with, but that doesn't give you the right to remove things. We've had a situation where people have been removing signs for whatever reason, presumably because they don't like it. And that's not really your privilege. It's nice to have a venue where people can express their views. But, you know, whatever they may be, Black Lives Matter or Happy Birthday, Jane Doe. But please be respectful of your fellow citizens and allow them to express their views and don't remove other people's signs. Also like to remind people that the library is not open. It's normal hours, but it is available by appointment. Aaron Hawks lives a short walk away from the library. So please feel free to use those facilities. And remember they are available to you, you just have to call and make an appointment. There's also some news from the past week about legal cases with Northeastern. Essex Superior Courts have made three rulings over the past week that had been sort of lingering due to COVID-19. But just for background, Nahat Preservation Trust and 28 private citizens have filed a suit claiming that that land through via Massachusetts Chapter 27 is available, should be available to the, that's public, viewed as public land. Northeastern filed a suit to have that suit dismissed. And Essex Superior Courts have denied that request to dismiss that suit. Another update is that the town of Nahat filed a petition to join the NPT suit. And the reason the town voted to join the suit is it provides additional standing for the suit. So I'll explain in sort of layman's terms. It gives a little more clout to the suit if the town is standing behind the suit. The result from court ruling was that Nahat is allowed to join that suit. Separately, but importantly, a gift agreement, a formal gift agreement has been signed between Nahat Preservation Trust and the town of Nahat so that we can receive gifts to defray legal costs associated with this suit. The third item, maybe Mark should explain this, but Mark was one of the 28 private citizens listed on that lawsuit, the Nahat Preservation Trust lawsuit, Chapter 97 suit. And when he became selectman, he requested that his name be removed from that. Northeastern objected to the removal of his name. And the other day, the court dismissed that or allowed Mark's request to be removed from the suit. Mark, I don't know if you had anything to add about your personal situation or any of the others?
Like I said, let me just say that I'm fading in and out. I lose connections every now and then. So if you can't hear me, if you lose me, just continue the meeting without me. But as Josh said, that I was one of the, one of the members who signed that original lawsuit as I, when I was a member of the Nahat Preservation Trust. After being elected, well, before even running for the Board of Selectmen, I withdrew my name from the Preservation Trust when I requested that I be withdrawn from the lawsuit. And I guess the court had decided that that was a legitimate request. So I'm glad that happened. I can only assume that the reason that Northeastern didn't want to release me is because they didn't want me voting on matters related to Northeastern. Because they would have said it was a conflict of interest, but the courts decided that was not the case. So I'm glad to hear that.
So I think, you know, those are three important legal wins for people that want to preserve Northeastern or excuse me, East Point from Northeastern's planned expansion. Gene or Mark, do you have any other opening comments or Tony?
I don't, I don't have any comments.
Likewise, I have nothing.
All right.
I'm good as well, thank you.
All right, so new business. We're going to have a joint vote for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors to fill a vacancy on the Board of Assessors. And Tony, you can lead us through that process, please.
Okay, and we have Dan Scrip on the line as well. So Perry, unmute you, there you are. And Dan Hunt, are you on the phone as well? Or Dave Hunt, I'm sorry?
Yes, I am, I just unmuted.
Okay, so Dan Scrip.
Yeah.
Does, before we get into this process, does the Board of Assessors, David and Pep, need to officially open their meeting as a joint session with the Board of Selectmen?
Well, the Selectmen have already opened the joint meeting already, right? That's my understanding. So that, it is a joint meeting, so that should suffice.
Okay. All right.
Planning Board for that matter.
Okay. All right, so section, is it 313 of the Charter, I believe, where it says that when there's a vacant seat of an elected board, that it falls to the Board of Selectmen to vote to fill that seat until the next election, when that seat will be up for election for the remaining years of the term of that open seat. And when it's a vote for an elected seat that has other members to that board or committee, like the Board of Assessors, it's a joint vote with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors in this case. So what we're going to do here is I have a ballot in front of me that I'll fill in your votes and then I'll have the chairman sign it. I'll have you come by the town hall and sign it and then we'll submit it to the town clerk. And we announced the open seat two weeks ago, or I'm sorry, at the beginning of July, I believe. And then we allowed two weeks for anybody interested in the vacancy of the Board of Assessors to submit their cover letter, name and resume. And then we're going to have, so now we're going to have the vote. So you have two candidates, and this is to fit, to fill Megan Kramer's seat. And your two candidates that submitted their name was Michael Koller and Catherine Marie Sherber. So simply what I'll do here is in alphabetical order, I will, in alphabetical order of both the Selectmen and the Board of Assessors, I'll call out your name. And if you can just, if you can just announce either Michael or Catherine's name as your vote, I'll write it down and tally it up. And then get the chairman's signatures over the next couple of days and submit it to the town clerk. Is there any questions from the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Assessors?
Well, I do have one question, which is the way the agenda is written, we vote on one person before we have a discussion about the other person. So I had a question, I really wanted to ask the other members of the Board of Assessors a question. So can I sneak that in?
Absolutely.
All right, so it's really a question for you two guys on the Board of Assessors. So I see that Catherine Sherber is employed at Patriot Properties, which I, you know, I think would be an asset. But do you see any conflict with that in serving on the Board of Assessors or not?
I'll speak to that. I do not see a conflict. The town of Nahat has contracted with Patriot Properties for a great many years, longstanding relationship there. Would be appropriate that at the time of contract renewals or extensions that we would miss, whatever the candidate of, Miss Sherber, would abstain from that based upon her employment of Patriot Properties, but we still develop two other members. So that would be the only situation, I think that that would create a situation where she would be inappropriately, wouldn't be allowed to vote. But Catherine Sherber is, the Board of Assessors is one of the only municipality positions, elected positions that is required that you take a course 101 to be qualified to be an assessor within the first two years of election or appointment. So she has already done that. She will have to renew that based upon her potential appointment to the board, but I don't see that that being an issue at all.
Perry?
Does that answer your question, Josh?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Hey, Tony, I might want to pipe in here a little bit. We should first vote to nominate the candidates first. And during that nomination process, any questions could be asked regarding, as Josh mentioned, conflicts, anything like that. That would provide the forum helpful for that to occur.
So can you, Dan, maybe offer a motion so that the Selectmen can move that?
Yes, it's in the packet.
As a nominate. So if we...
I would ask, if Gene could read his, that would be appropriate, I think.
Okay, what do you want me to do? Make a motion?
If you look into your packet under number three, new business.
I see it.
Yep, if you can make the motion to nominate.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors nominate Catherine Marie Sherber for the open seat on the Board of Assessors.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, all those in favor? I'll start, Josh Antrim.
I think it will go first.
Perry Barasso.
Aye.
Why don't I do it this? Why don't I do it this way? I'll read off, I'll read you, I'll read off your names, just like I will for the vote. So this is a roll call vote for the nomination of Catherine Marie Sherber, moved by Gene Canty and seconded by Josh Antrim. So please vote in the affirmative or in the negative when I call your name. Josh Antrim?
Aye.
Perry Barasso?
Aye.
Gene Canty?
Aye.
Mark Cullen?
Aye.
David Hunt?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, the second nominee, I move that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors nominate Michael A. Koller for the open seat on the Board of Assessors. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Tony, you want to do a roll call vote?
Okay, roll call vote to nominate Michael Koller as motion by Josh Antrim and seconded by Gene Canty. Josh Antrim?
Aye.
Perry Barasso?
I have the Zoom app.
Gene Canty?
Aye.
Mark Cullen?
Nay.
David Hunt?
Can I clarify, is this the vote to nominate the person or the vote on that person?
This is, this is just nominate. The next, the next part will be a vote between the two. I'll ask you to vote for a name.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
So I say aye.
I would say aye too for the nomination.
Okay.
Same here.
Same here.
So unanimous on both nominations? Okay. So now what I will do is I'll read through the same roll call. And if you can, please just either say Catherine Marie Sherber or Michael Koller.
All right, now before we do that, is there any discussion? Anyone? I have none. All right.
None. None.
All right, Tony, please proceed.
Okay, in the same alphabetical order of both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors, Josh Antrim.
Catherine Marie Sherber.
Perry Barasso.
Catherine Marie Sherber.
Gene Canty.
Catherine Marie Sherber.
Mark Cullen.
Catherine Marie Sherber.
And David Hunt.
Catherine Marie Sherber.
Okay. So that's five votes for Catherine Marie Sherber. And Catherine, I don't know, we'll reach out to Catherine tomorrow unless she's on the phone now and get her an appointment letter and have her come in and get sworn in by the clerk. And I'll reach out to you, Perry, to have you sign this ballot. And same with you, Josh, and we'll submit this to the clerk. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Us too, Catherine.
Thanks for volunteering, Catherine, and also thank you, Michael, for volunteering.
Thank you, guys.
Can I just clarify, is there anything I am going to need to sign or is it just Perry?
Just Perry, just this, just, he's the chairman, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You all done?
All right, do you want to move on to the next joint vote?
I'm sure. Gene?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board nominate Caitlin Kelly Merrill for the open seat on the Planning Board.
Seconded.
Tony, do I do the roll call vote?
Uh, yes. Okay, so this is for the nomination of Caitlin Kelly, Caitlin Kelly Merrill. Josh Antrim?
Aye.
Daniel Berman?
Aye.
Shannon Bianchi? Let me unmute him.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gene Canty?
Aye.
Mark Cullen?
Aye.
Sheila Hamilton?
Aye.
Cal Hastings?
Aye.
Aye.
Mirhanna Maximavich? Do you, do you know if Mirhanna's on the call?
I have not seen her appear on the screen, so I don't know.
Mariana, are you with us? She may not be.
Okay, Stephen Viviano?
Aye.
Okay, so Caitlin Kelly, it is unanimous for those who are here as the nominee.
All right, I move that the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board nominate Michael Koller for the open seat on the Planning Board. Anyone seconding?
Seconded.
Thank you.
Didn't we just nominate him for assessors?
Yes, he volunteered for both.
Man of many talents.
Is that appropriate to be a candidate for both, Dan?
Yeah, I don't see a problem at all. The problem comes when they're elected officials and these are nominated officials. I have a while at the moment, I should say.
Okay.
Okay, seconded, and I mean, if there's no other discussion, I'll roll call this vote for the nomination. Josh Antrim?
Aye.
Daniel Berman?
Aye.
Shannon Bianchi?
Aye.
Gene Canty?
Aye.
Mark Cullen?
Aye.
Sheila Hamilton?
Aye.
Calvin Hastings?
Aye.
Stephen Viviano?
Aye.
Okay, so Michael Koller unanimous on his nomination.
I move that the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board nominate Patrick O'Reilly for the open seat on the Planning Board.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Tony?
Okay, Josh Antrim?
Aye.
Daniel Berman?
Aye.
Shannon Bianchi?
Aye.
Gene Canty?
Aye.
Mark Cullen?
Aye.
Sheila Hamilton?
Aye.
Calvin Hastings?
Aye.
Stephen Viviano?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous on Patrick's nomination. All right, so I'm going to go through the same roll call list. And if you...
Call from Mark, Cat and me.
So when I call your name, if you could please vote for Caitlin Kelly, Michael Koller, or Patrick O'Reilly? Josh Antrim?
Patrick O'Reilly.
Patrick O'Reilly is an attorney out of Lenz, is that who that is?
O'Reilly.
Sheila, you're live.
I'm Caitlin Merrill.
No, I meant your mic was live.
All right, hold on. Daniel Berman?
Patrick O'Reilly.
Shannon Bianchi?
Patrick O'Reilly.
Gene Canty?
Patrick O'Reilly.
Mark Cullen?
Patrick O'Reilly.
Sheila Hamilton?
Caitlin Merrill.
Calvin Hastings?
Caitlin Merrill.
Stephen Viviano?
Caitlin Merrill.
Okay, so I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 for Patrick O'Reilly and 3 for Caitlin Merrill. So congratulations, Patrick. I will, like I said, I will, we'll reach out to Patrick tomorrow, have him come in and get sworn in by the town clerk. And I will reach out to Cal to come sign this ballot.
Thank you, everyone.
And Dan Scrip, so all, or I should say, both of those candidates run for election in the spring if they choose to come on the boards, right?
Right, their term is only as long as the seat they're in. And it's, at this point, it's only about nine months, I believe. So there'll be two seats open on each of these boards come next election.
Well, there, on the Planning Board, there'll be more than that, I think. But this seat, the term to which Gene was elected runs until 2024. So when, when this, when Patrick faces the voters, if he wants to continue, there will be three years left in that term to be elected next spring, along with whoever else is up at that time.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, Planning Board.
Okay, wait, can we, can we also thank Caitlin or Michael for participating in this? We may have other things that you might be interested in helping us with later on. And shall we adjourn our portion of this meeting? Would that be appropriate?
A total meeting is a joint meeting, it'll be adjourned at the end. You could certainly stay on, but you don't have to remain if you don't want. It'll be concluded once we close at the end of the entire meeting.
Okay, so that means that we are still, the Planning Board is still in session until the end of the entire?
Technically, yeah, but there's no more business on the agenda for you guys.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just wanted to echo what Dan said, Caitlin and Michael.
Josh? What? Suggestions, can we, can we have a few more appointments? Can we do that and then turn it over to Deb and John on the Corona?
Sure, but I just wanted to echo Dan's statement about thanking Caitlin and Michael for voting.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a nice luxury to have more than enough candidates to fill a seat. So we really do appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. So is Deb ready to give us a coronavirus update?
Yes, I can, I am ready to give you the update.
All right, and John Coulon's on, I think.
I don't think that was me making that noise, right?
There's a lot of noises.
Hi, John.
Hi.
So, um, I'm sure everybody saw the front page of the item today that displayed Nahat's latest figures of nine new positive cases, but as of today, we only have one positive case that remains active in town. So my last positive case came in on July 27th. So again, we've had a few consecutive days, which is great with no new cases. So, um, the statistics for the state are unfortunately every day going higher, and yesterday, August 4th, there were 438 new cases reported in the state of Massachusetts. That is up considerably from the middle to late June, July, when we were down into the 111 new cases, 120, so to go up to now 300 and 400 new cases the last few days in the state, and it seems to be climbing every day, is a bit, it's concerning. It's concerning because we didn't want, and we wanted the trend to obviously to go in the other way, but...
Hey, go the other way.
I think, you know, I think the town, I'm sure everybody has seen the Governor Baker's new mask initiative, you know, the mask campaign that he's on, and I really, I'm trying to work with the, you know, I'm on the school reopening committee, and we all know from everything we've read that for schools to reopen safely, the whole community has to take part in the vigilance to prevent community transmission, and that means that everybody in town should have a mask on and social distance when they are really anywhere in an effort to keep the town as healthy as possible so that our kids in town can go back to school, because everybody agrees kids need to be in school. So to that point, we see yesterday Salem has canceled Halloween. You know that the Wall of the Hills canceled Nahat, well, they've just canceled the rest of their schedule for the rest of the year. So any large gatherings that have been planned, as the communities now are proactively deciding to cancel them, because every community wants the kids to go back to school. And so in my regional local Board of Health meetings, with everyone is trying to think of ways to make their community more ready for that to happen. And everyone has, knows that the community has to, you know, step up for the kids more or less, you know, mask up for the kids, that's kind of the new, you know, I think that's the new campaign that we're gonna take forward. I don't think there's anybody that wants to see the kids do remote learning all year long for many, many different reasons. So I'm hopeful, like I said, we've had a few days with no new cases, and I'm hopeful that we can, you know, we had four and a half, almost five weeks, middle of June where we had no new cases, then we had that little blip of nine cases. So I hope now we're on a, you know, a better trend, and it's a daily, you know, it's a daily, we have to watch it daily, that's what I do, so. That's all I have. John, I don't know if you want to add to that.
I would like to add that the two largest mass gatherings in New England have been canceled, that being the Big E and Topsfield Fair. That says something, and I'd also like to make two brief points. I'd like to remind the Nahat community that their addiction of crisis fatigue, it is common to all disruption of our normal routine when disruption of crisis fatigue at some point tend to start to, and start to, and affect me. And unfortunately, the danger of a second wave is very real, and the danger of another shutdown is very real. We can imagine what will be involved if another shutdown comes. The second point I'd like to make is that I'm surprised that Nahat had 15 months of this global pandemic. Four of these, I was surprised that we went so many weeks with no cases at all, so that was very good for the community. That means that we can do it, and we get back to going weeks without any new cases. It will need, people need to pay attention to their, and I see in the community, some people out and above with their masks and even wearing them, wearing them properly. So I'd like to encourage people to keep that in mind, keep them in mind that we want the schools to reopen, stay open, we want our businesses to open or reopen, and we can do it. There are other communities that are managing, but unfortunately, the way things go in the state will dictate the state mandates, but we can certainly manage in our small community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any idea what the reopening plans are for the Nahat schools?
There's been some conversation, public conversation, last night, and again tomorrow night, and then again Tuesday night. I believe those meetings are, they're either at 6:00 or 7:00, and they're held by Zoom, just like this one, and people can find them by going to the community calendar and clicking on the link to the school committee's publicly posted meetings. They have a reopening committee, like Deb, like the health nurse Deb Murphy mentioned, she's on that committee.
Great.
They have, um, there's a whole host of, I think last night's meeting Deb said was two and a half hours, it was, and there was like over 60 people signed on to that meeting following along, so it's...
Now, was that just for us, or both Swamps get Nahat?
Just Nahat.
Just Nahat, Johnson Elementary.
Okay.
So, you know, I think it's a, there is multiple, multiple layers with the reopening, you know, it's not just simply, you know, have kids in school, or have kids learning from home, or having a hybrid. It's also, you know, how are you gonna keep kids separate in school? How are you gonna allow people, how are you gonna allow kids to log on from home? What are you gonna, how are you gonna handle testing and training of the employees, and also testing of students if they have symptoms? How many students test positive would call for a shutdown? You know, there's a million, there's so many different layers that are being considered. It's quite the project, and they got a great team working on it, so I encourage any parents to, that are interested to participate in those meetings. Again, they met last night, they meet again tomorrow night, and then Tuesday again next week, and Jean, sorry, Selectman Cante, as a selectman, you are also a member of the Board of Health, and once, what we'll be doing is we'll have a joint meeting, Board of Health, with the school committee at the next meeting, where they will present to you, you know, all the work that they've done to that point.
Great, that's excellent. Thank you.
Deb, anything else?
Um, no, I think that's it. Like I said, I think our main goal now, if we can keep the numbers down, is to really, you know, work with, we have a great committee on this school reopening committee, and just, you know, our goal is to get the kids into school.
Deb, I asked this the last time, I'll ask it again, what was the gender and the age groups of these last nine?
Well, you know, it was a little bit of everything, actually. There were, yeah, there wasn't, you know, it wasn't a group of all 13-year-olds. It was, you know, it was somebody in their 60s, somebody in their 40s, somebody in their 50s. There was no, I couldn't, there was really no connection between any of these cases except family, you know, so you can't, you really can't say with those nine that it was a, you know, not like before when we had the nursing home where we could say, oh, everybody was, you know, 70, 80, 90. Can't do that. It's really very, very, it's right across the board now, but...
Thank you.
And I will, you know, commend our health nurse on this too, because, you know, before when we had a lot of cases, and many of them were in Jesmond, the tracking of contacts was...
It didn't have...
It was easy compared to what I think you're going through now, when you have so much summer activity, you know, people at the beach, or at the park, or in their backyard, or, you know, things like that. You know, Deb had a number of contacts to reach out to, so she's been working nonstop, and we thank her.
For sure.
Deb, do you want to mention anything about, I mean, about, you know, that we're getting into the planning phases as well on the flu shot?
I was just thinking about that, so I don't want to say too much, except that we're hopefully having a meeting on Monday. Bobby Joe is gonna be putting that together for us. We're going to have, we are having, our flu clinic this year is gonna be a drive-through. It's going to be our first shot at a drive-through outside flu clinic. I met with the regional Board of Health nurses today specifically for flu clinic planning, and everyone will be doing theirs outside this year because of, naturally because of COVID, and and also because many people that have the virus now are asymptomatic, and they don't know they have the virus. So even if we brought people into Town Hall and tried to space them out, we really can't be 100% sure that the next person in line, you know what I mean, wouldn't be safe. So we're going to do it outside. We have a flu team that I've put together, and have nurses and clerical people to help the date of the flu. I did hear good news today from our vaccine supplier that our flu shipment is going to all come on the same day instead of three separate shipments like we had last year. So we will be able to plan it, and we're going to try this year to do it by appointment only, so that we have a steady stream for the drive-through, and we don't have, you know, traffic jams, we don't. So more to come on that. We'll be really starting to plan that out on Monday.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
All right, if that's all on the coronavirus update, we can return to new business. Topic 3C, setting the date, time, and location of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Jean, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Or I can make the motion, and then you can second?
I will.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to set the 2020 Annual Town Meeting date to September, excuse me, September 26, 2020, that's a Saturday, at 12:30 PM, and to assemble at the Flash Road Park in Nahat, Massachusetts.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I guess I have a couple words. I know Tony has considered a lot of different possibilities, venues, locations, scenarios, and this is what seemed to fit the bill. Are being based to spread out for social distancing. Tony, do you want to add anything there?
Yeah, and I'll just, a little background too is legislation was passed at the state that allowed town meeting to be postponed, and typically, we'd be having our town meeting back in May, but because of COVID, we postponed it, and also due to COVID guidance, it would be basically impossible to host that meeting indoors, to account for the appropriate amount of spacing with social distance guidelines. So we looked at, we considered Bailey Hill, Lowlands, Country Club, a number of different places, and whether it came to parking, or you know, issues related to size of the space and things like that, we narrowed it, we narrowed down to Flash Road Park. So what we'll, we'll have, people can park on Flash Road, they can park at the school, they'll be able to park in the parking lot, we have, you know, we have bathrooms in the area, we can easily close in the space so that folks are going through a check-in line similar to that we have in Town Hall. And we can accommodate, you know, as large, you know, as a big group or a small group, depending on which way we decide to go with coronavirus numbers and what's on the warrant. So either way, Saturday, September 26th, at 12:30 at Flash Road Park is the venue, and we have quotes coming in for different scenarios for seats and stage and audio visual, and we'll have, you know, all those logistics planned out and announced publicly as we get closer to the day.
So Tony, will there be like fencing to contain people so that they're not floating in or out?
Yeah, so we'll have to, we'll put up some type of, there's some, that's the other benefit of Flash Road Park is the idea right now is to use Babe Ruth Field, kind of extend it into the soccer field, and we can use the existing fencing to help along with that, but yes, you know, anybody that, you have to be a registered voter to be at town meeting, so there'll be a check-in line, and then folks will have wristbands once they get checked in, and of course, of course, there'll be, we're working on the electronic voting like we did at the last meeting as well. We, you know, as far as having a tent, you know, having it, again, it's somewhat dependent on what's on the agenda and how many people we expect to attend. And then we'll have, what we're working on simultaneously is a rain date located. So for now, this will be the, this will be the date, and then we will, we'll put something out publicly and hear at a Board of Soccer meeting about a rain date in the coming weeks, should we need it.
There's a couple questions in the chat. You sort of addressed those just now, Tony, but Alice Court asked about the possibility of a rain date, and you just addressed that, and Ken Corangelo... and you just addressed that. And Ken Corangelo asked about, uh, any guidance from, uh, about town meetings from public health officials. I think you touched upon that at the beginning of your talk. Could you just reiterate that?
Sure. Um, so, outdoor, unenclosed COVID guidance is, doesn't have a cap on the amount of people so long as you're keeping six foot social distancing. Um, enclosed would be a tent and then it, it has a 100-person cap. However, legislative bodies are exempt from the guidance. But even though we're exempt, we still want to lead by example and follow the social distance guidance of, that's provided by the state. So, um, you know, we, we, we would be limited to how many people we can fit under a tent based on 36 square feet per person essentially. Six, you know, six foot distance, six by six. Uh, so, um, you know, we are continuing to monitor local numbers and state numbers. Um, as Deb mentioned earlier, state numbers are seeing an increase day by day and the governor may come out with, um, new guidance in the coming, coming days or weeks that we'll have to adjust for. Um, you know, again, mostly it comes down to, uh, you know, what's on the agenda and that's something that, um, the Board of Selectmen and the health nurse and the, and the health inspector and I are having continued conversations. So, we are, you know, we're planning for a full warrant, you know, with a whole, with the entire host of articles. Um, but, you know, we may need to adjust and have a simplified warrant if the, if public health rules call for it. Uh, so it's something that we're monitoring closely. Uh, but either way, we would be doing, you know, Saturday, the 26th at Flash Road.
Tony, can I add something? I just want to reiterate that the first day of school in person for not everybody, but the first group that's going is September 21st. So, having, um, the meeting September 22nd, you know, five days later, it, I worry a little bit about how many hundreds of people are going to be in the field, um, six feet apart. Are they gonna, is everyone gonna have a mask on the whole time? Or, you know, I, I'm just trying to say, when I see everything, everybody canceling these big events and we're, we're trying to really focus on the school reopening safely, I just want to make sure we're aware of everything else that's going on and the numbers and, uh, and of course, you know, we'll be tracking the data for the town as well up until then. But, um, the last thing I want to do is open up the school and, you know, two weeks later, close it down. Just, um, just to skip me this theory thought for me. That's, that's all.
I think that's a great point. Um, it's definitely something that is, that we're, that we're, you know, I'm glad you brought it up. It's definitely something that we're, that we're considering. Um, we, you know, we looked at, uh, a lot of other towns and how they handled their town meetings. Um, legislation, Dan, I'll let you jump in here, but, um, legislation and DOR, Department of Revenue Guidance, allow for the town to do one-month budgets up to three months total. And so, that's what the town has been doing. Um, we've, we, we approved a one-month budget for, um, July and for August and the next one will be for September. Uh, it doesn't allow us to go beyond that date and we need to have an approved budget to continue this standard operation of the gov, of government. We, you know, many other communities have, uh, representative town meeting. They actually have, um, we're, oh, let me back up one sec. I'm sorry. The other part of the legislation allowed for the quorum amount to be decreased for the meeting. Dan, do you recall what the specifics were about the quorum piece?
Uh, there was a percentage. I know it's a silly number for us. Our quorum currently is 75, as I recall, and it was something like you could have no less than 10%. So, theoretically, you could have eight people, maybe nine as a quorum. So, it's really, it's sort of a silly number that really won't affect us much at all. And to, to Tony's point, a lot of these towns, uh, you might be hearing are having town meetings, but ours is the rarest form of town meeting and that's an open town meeting. So, it's going to attract a lot of people. So, that's an added consideration that I know these, uh, Deb and Tony are considering.
I'd like to suggest maybe Tony and Deb and you, Dan, and John Coulon have a little meeting and, uh, so that you can report back at the next Board of Selectmen meeting to make sure that we have a plan that is acceptable to, um, Deb. Or not.
Certainly. Um, yeah, we, you know, I think Deb and I talk about it every day. Um, and we'll definitely, I, I think that's a great idea. We can, we can definitely sit down and, 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 you know, we're putting stuff day by day, pen to paper. Um, but yeah, it's, it, it, some towns, just again, for more background, some towns that have a 200-person quorum were able to lower that down to maybe, you know, less than 100. And really, they were able to do sometimes a webinar like this, like a, a, a virtual meeting and actually have a training and control the amount of people that were going to be either online or at a meeting in person. Where we have open town meeting, we want to meet our minimum for the quorum, but, you know, we may want to, we may want to try to control, um, our maximum too so that we don't have too many people depending on, on the public health guidance that we get. Um, and some of that will impact, you know, the, the articles on the warrant. As you guys know, um, as I think it's no secret to folks in town, um, certain articles on the warrant are going to call for, um, larger participation. So, those are things that we need to, that we're, that we're, that we're monitoring daily. Uh, we're planning for, we're planning to hopefully be able to do it all i- in a safe way so people can voice their opinion and, and participate in a, in a healthy manner. Um, but it is possible that we may need to adjust, adjust to the, to the circumstances because as we said, um, you know, the state numbers are climbing daily and the governor may come out and, you know, take a step backwards in his, uh, you know, phase reopening approach. So, um, so that's the, that's the, uh, that's, that's most of the background there. But either, like I said, either way, we would, it, whether we're having 100 people or having, you know, 50,000, obviously we wouldn't have 50,000, but, uh, we're going to be at Flash Road Park spaced out with masks on in a organized fashion, um, very organized fashion so that it's, it's a, uh, publicly healthy way to conduct a meeting.
Not sure where the hand raising protocol is. Hi, I just put this in the chat, but Tony, to, to something what you just said, um, raised my eyebrow. If you're talking about potentially limiting the number of participants to stay below, you know, some safe limit, how, if there's anything contentious that's being discussed on the warrant, how could you, uh, how could you ensure that the distribution of people in the room represented what was outside the room if you were capping?
I think, you know, in discussion with the Board of Selectmen, um, that they would want to make sure that if there's anything contentious on the warrant, that we are allowing as many people as possible. We're not capping it at all, um, their ability to participate in those, in those warrant articles. Um, so if we are in a public health scenario that we really need to limit the amount of people, then we need to consider adjusting the articles on the warrant and, and really do things that are, um, bare essentials of keeping government running. Um, but again, you know, that's, it's really, it's, it's a fluid situation. I don't want to get too far ahead of, uh, of the Selectmen on that discussion.
Thank you.
Well, as, as a, as a logical, um, plan, uh, the, the town hall has a certain capacity and we have to make sure that this outdoor venue has at least that capacity. That would be the first logical, uh...
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on, um, the town meeting before we move to the next item?
Well, yeah, just one more question. What, what does happen if you run over capacity or, or an established number for capacity?
If it was, for example, if we were in the town hall, for example, if we were in the town hall, which has a capacity, I think of just under 500, it's in the high 400s, um, we'd have to, we'd have to post, continue the meeting.
Yeah, Gene, the moderator has the power under the COVID laws to, uh, to declare that the meeting cannot occur due to the outstanding circumstances and, and then postpone it beyond, um, beyond the date of the schedule. So, the, so that would be within, um, the moderator's, uh, power.
Let me, let me jump in here. Um, let me first say two things. One, I think this is going to be, um, sort of data-driven, governor's recommendations, what happens over the next month or so. Uh, we're going to have to follow whatever his guidelines are regarding, um, how many people can, um, come together in, in, in what way. But secondly, I am not in favor of limiting anyone. If, if we are able to have town meeting, um, I would not be willing to, uh, limit anyone from participating.
Yeah, I think, I think Ken misunderstood Tony. I don't think Tony was suggesting for a second that any citizen would be, would be eliminated from town meeting. That just, that was never in our conversation. So, I think that was a misunderstanding on Ken's part.
It was the word cap that caught my, caught my attention. Sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, I apologize for that, Ken. I, I, I guess if I was, um, if we were in a scenario where we were being, uh, told, you know, by the state for guidance that we should, should limit it to a certain amount of people, uh, we would want to adjust the warrant accordingly to the, you know, non-contemptious articles and publicly educate folks on the importance of, um, you know, keeping the numbers low. But we would never turn anybody away and we would prepare for, um, as many people as we need by having enough chairs and having them spaced out appropriately and, and things of that nature.
Okay, um, trash bills?
Uh, I think you need to vote. I think that was still discussion.
Right. It was just discussion. You're right.
All right. Uh, looks like it's, okay. So, uh, we've had our discussion. Uh, roll call, vote. Josh Antrimai?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Okay. Now we can talk about trash.
Okay. So, this is, yeah, this is more of a discussion, um, for folks on the, for folks paying attention here. We, we typically send out our trash bills by now, but they're actually delayed. Um, part of that is due to the new contract with waste management and the increase in the cost of that service. And what we're doing internally is, um, taking a look at how we distribute those costs among the town. And we're going to be presenting, um, an alternative to the Selectmen soon. Um, as a little preview to it, what we've been looking at is, um, our billing service has it programmed by, um, parcel number right now or parcel ID. So, if you have a single-family home and you have a four-family home, they're actually, uh, as classified with the assessors, um, they're actually receiving the same fee. So, what we're trying to do is, um, adjust that so that, you know, each unit of, of home is being charged a trash fee. And that, that, you know, will, um, increase the number of folks paying bills, which would then distribute the fee amongst more people and potentially help suppress the increase in the, in the fee itself, the individual fee itself. Uh, Dan's been working closely with Sheila in the assessor's office and Mary Lowe and they, uh, have been doing a tremendous, tremendous job on this analysis. And, um, Dan, I'll, I'll pass it to you if you have anything you want to add to that.
No, no, you articulated it pretty well. The, the over, the regular, the bill for this R1, the one household, actually is going to stay the same if not go down a little bit. But as you mentioned, it's going to be spread out over more households that, to this point, have beginning the benefit of, um, of the, of the past, uh, way of doing things. So, it's going to be a much, much fairer, uh, way of distributing the cost of waste management and the rubbish enterprise fund.
So, hopefully we'll have that in front of you, the board, um, at the next meeting. So then we can, um, um, you know, get the trash bills out as soon as possible after that.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks for the effort on that. Sounds like a good outcome for, for, uh, all the residents.
Okay. Um, where we go, Josh?
Yep, you can go.
Um, I move that the, um, Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of the Nahat Police Officer Matthew Monroe to the rank of sergeant with the Nahat Police Department.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, Chief Dwyer is on the call. Uh, just unmuted you, chief, if you want to, um, participate in discussion.
Sure. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for taking the time, um, to assist with this promotion. Um, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we, uh, we appointed, um, Sergeant Schultz, Lieutenant Schultz, and this is the result of that, uh, promotion. Um, I, uh, respectfully asked the board to, uh, promote Matthew Monroe to this, to, uh, the sergeant's position. On, uh, July 23rd, we held a, uh, held an assessment center, approximately four or five hours of testing. Uh, the officers went through, um, a process with, with real life scenarios in front of three outside chiefs. And at the end of the, uh, process, they, they have a, uh, scoring, um, tablet that they use and they, they send me the results of the, of the, uh, the, uh, assessment center. At the end of the assessment center, Officer Monroe, obviously, the reason why I'm appointing him, he did well in the assessment center. Um, he's been with us since 2011 as a police reserve. Um, in 2015, he was appointed, um, uh, patrolman. He has a BA, bachelor's degree in criminal justice and he's a certified EMT. He was also a dispatcher in P V D. He brought that experience to us. Uh, he's been in the community for five years, well-respected, and I'm looking for your support in this appointment.
Right. Excellent.
Yeah, my full support. Chief, um, Officer Monroe's been a great leader, uh, amongst the guys at the, at the department and, um, great community police officer. Nothing but great things to say. I think it's a, I, I know that there was a, um, couple officers looking for this promotion and both, uh, were, uh, great candidates for it and either, we would have been, we are lucky that either one would have been a great, great option. But, um, congratulations on, on this selection. I completely support it. Officer Monroe is, uh, we're lucky to have.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks for your, uh, input, chief.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing it seen none. Uh, roll call, vote. Josh Antrimai?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, 3F is to approve the appointment of Reserve Officer Brian W. Nazaro. Gene, would you like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Reserve Officer Brian Nazaro with the Nahat Police Department.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Chief? Chief?
Yes, Brian Nazaro, looking forward to this young man coming to work for us. He's 25 years old. He's a Medford resident. He has a BA in business at this time. Hopefully we'll change it to criminal justice. In November, he was a 2019 graduate from the Full Time Academy. Brian put himself as a self sponsor through a full time academy, which means he assumed all the cost on his own, his own time without getting paid. I think he'd be an asset to the department. I'm hoping that we can groom him and, you know, in the future opening of the police department, he may have a, an opportunity to become a full time Nahat police officer. You know, obviously, we're always looking for good reserve officers. Reserves go through approximately 400 hours of training. But however, a full time academy is, you know, I can't remember what the hours are, up to 800 or 1,000 hours now. So I'm glad to have Mr. Brian Nazaro as the next reserve in the Nahat Police Department. I'm looking for your support on this appointment as well.
Great. Percy's on the Zoom call.
Brian is on the Zoom call. And I also have Sergeant Monroe here as well. He's sitting in my office going through this process.
All right. I guess I won't say congratulations yet, but in a moment. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote. Josh Antrimi.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mike Cullen, aye.
Okay, now congratulations, Mr. Nazaro and Sergeant Monroe.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good job, chief. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congrats. The next item on the agenda is a discussion about parking issues. Been a hot topic among the citizens. And I know, Dan Scrip, you've been digging into this a bit. So you or Tony want to talk us through the current status?
Sure. Tony, you want to take it? Want me to take it? It's up to you.
Um, go ahead, Dan. I'll jump in after you.
Okay, parking is a big, a big issue around the town here. And just reviewing our parking policies and reviewing our schedule of violations, we've discovered that there's some leeway here. And in order to bring our situation to the best place it could be, which is to say to charge a bit more for the parking violations, we determined that we could rescind a vote that was taken by town meeting back in 1964, adopting a particular statute. And if we rescind that, that vote and then take another vote to accept a graduated, more powerful statute, then we are putting ourselves in a position where we can take a bigger and more stronger, or more stronger stand regarding the parking issues around town. And we need town meeting to do that.
I'll also, you know, Chief Dwyer is also here on the call. I know, we know that this year, you know, parking and activity in town has been a hot issue around the community. I will say that a lot of that is due to the coronavirus and, you know, that we have a lot of people that aren't going on vacations or kids aren't in sports or at camp. And, you know, really the only option they have is to enjoy our public beaches. And not just us. This is being seen up and down the coast. Did pull some information, it's in your packet, comparing from March 1st of 2019 to July 31st of 2019, so last year, we had 334 tickets to $11,785. For that same time period this year, we've issued 1,100 tickets to the tune of almost $42,000. So for the same timeframe, you've seen a significant increase in ticketing and violations and just simply the number of people in town. So I, you know, the, our offices are, are working hard at combating the current issues that we have. And I think that there's additional layers to that is we have signage issues in town, which we have planned. We have money in the budget planned for a sign audit of the community. Unfortunately, because town meeting was postponed, we haven't, you know, that, that amount of money hasn't been approved yet. And so we haven't been able to pursue that contract, but that is another step in the process. Chief Dwyer, do you want to mention anything?
Sure.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I've been here for 30 years and I've been, we've been dealing with parking issues my whole career. However, it's, there's nothing other than the numbers this year. This is what we do. You know, come May, June, I call it the Memorial Day Parade, the kickoff dance for, for the Nahat Police Department in reference to combating parking issues. It's been going on my whole career. Nothing has changed other than the COVID-19. So let's start back in March when this, this, the COVID started. We're all pretty much, you know, things slowed down, people were laid off or, or, you know, businesses were closed, schools were closed. So everything started shutting down. So then we decided that we're going to shut down all the state beaches and the parking, et cetera, which turned into traffic, people going out for rides. And I'm guilty of that myself. My wife and I, on a Sunday, our routines would, would change and we found ourselves driving up to Gloucester. So I was watching all these coastal towns on my way through and they're dealing with the same things we are. People are just looking for somewhere to go to enjoy the outside in, in their car with their families. So let's, you know, they come down Lynn Shore Drive, Lynn Shore Drive is closed, the beach parks closed, the Long Beach is closed. They continued to drive and majority of it was just traffic in March and April. So, so now, like, like Tony said, a lot of our issues right now, and let's look back with, you know, July. July usually is not that big of a month for us. It's busy, but not over the top because why? Because kids are in basketball camp, kids are in, are working summer programs, they're in baseball programs, football's getting ready. There's so many things going on. All of that has come to a halt. So what is, where else you're going to go? The vacations have been all dismissed. People can't go to New Hampshire, Maine. So a lot of things have changed. And so the alternative is the beach. And so we've been inundated, not only us swamps getting marbled. If you go right up the coast, we're all dealing with the same issues. It's trying to control chaos. And, you know, I don't fault the people looking for some way to cool off. We're just doing our best to control it. I wanted to say this, so the officers don't take this in the wrong way. They are working and they're working hard to control what's going over here. We are everywhere. We're from one end of this town to the other. We, I put as many officers on as I possibly can because we have, we're running 24/7. That Long Beach lot has caused us some problems from the beginning. We have to control that traffic down there. We have to control the flow. What goes on in the cars way with people trying to do, you know, trying to sneak in certain areas without standing in that line, causing us traffic backups? We get it, we get down there and try to control that. It's not an easy solution. We're doing the best we can to control it. I don't see this, if the Corona goes away, hopefully the COVID goes away this year and hopefully we'll have a vaccine for it. We come into next year, we're going to see a change. Are we still going to battle parking issues? Yes, we're in a coastal town. I've been dealing with it since 1992. We're going to be dealing it 10 years after I'm gone. You know, so it's here and we just got to control it. There's no easy solution. I've had a conversation with Tony a few times about this. You know, we have some issue, signage issues in town that need to be addressed. I'm not going to go into detail, but it needs to be looked at, it needs to be looked at closely. No parking on either side anytime means just that for everyone. So there's the, that's the beginning of a problem. So, so that means for everyone and not just Nahat residents, no parking anytime either side means for everyone. So there's certain things that we need to clean up in town to make it our jobs a little bit easier. But the officers are out there, they're battling it every weekend. We have a plan. There's officers designated to areas. They stay in those areas unless, unless something of, of like a lost child on the beach, for an example. That's an all out, let's go, we got to get down there and find that child. But other than that, they stay in those boxes to control the flow of, you know, legal pockets, parking, people parking illegally. The other issue, we talk about signs. I've made signs up, A-frame signs, we've got signs everywhere. You know, at, at this point, I've come to find out, if you want to ignore a sign, you ignore a sign. And people ignore signs. And we do the best we can under the circumstances. I know some people have come up with alternatives to what we're doing. As far as I'm concerned, we are the alternative. We, we understand the, we understand the problems, we know where the problems are and we address them as quickly as we possibly can. So, you know, I've addressed some offline, I've addressed some issues with residents. They get it. You know, the other part of this problems that we do have a lot of residents, so we invite guests to their houses, six, seven vehicles in front of their houses that, that are guests. You know, we got to deal with those bumps in the road every, every weekend as well. So we're doing the best we can. The officers are fighting the battle. And, and like I said, I think a big part of this, I've, I've seen it busy over here, but not the traffic I've seen since COVID. And I think if we go back to normal next year, we're going to be busy, but not like we, we are right now. So that's it. If anybody has any questions.
Thanks for that explanation, chief. Certainly know that you guys are working frantically. And, you know, just from a layman's point of view, it certainly does seem like it's much more of an issue this year than other years. But is there any, one thing I've heard from residents is the fee structure. And I understand there's some legal limits on the parking ticket fee structure that, love, you want to explain that, chief?
Sure, I can, I can have Dan chime and, uh, Dan Scrip a little bit. But however, we talk about the fee structure. You know, I've done a little research myself and again, since COVID, this days along, and we're trying to deal with a lot of issues every single day. So I try to get some parking tickets from the surrounding areas. Believe it or not, we are above the surrounding areas, our parking fines. And I believe we are locked into the fines we are currently using. I don't think we can exceed those. And Dan, if you could, maybe you can, you can chime in on that.
There are two statutes that pertain to parking around the Commonwealth and towns have the ability under the Home Rule to adopt to one of those two statutes. Fifty, 60 some years ago, we adopted Chapter 90, Section 20A, which as the chief mentioned, does set a limit on the, the violation schedule. The statute that town meeting will be suggesting, or will suggest a town meeting, is, it's neighboring statute, Chapter 90, Section 20A and a half. And it greatly increases the amount of fines or the, the, the amount of, the violation amount that the officers can charge for the same violations that are occurring today. And will obviously curtail the, the parking issue that we have at the moment.
And, and to, you know, on Tony's, talked about the number of tickets. And I know that, you know, I think we, we are closer to 1,400 tickets that we've issued, you know, because the last two weeks haven't been accounted for at town hall. You know, so as far as raising the fines, like Dan said, we're going to have to, you know, go through a process to, to get to that. Right now, I think it's status quo until we can get through the process.
Yeah, we don't have the ability to legally raise the fines anymore than they already are.
Right.
So I, I, you know, 900 more tickets in the same timeframe compared to last year really shows not only how much work you guys are doing at the police department, but also how many more people are in town right now. So.
Right.
Hey, chief, Jean Canty, I'd, I'd just like to say thank you too, because I met with Tony, what, Tony, a week or two ago?
Yeah.
And we, we talked about some minimal deterrents and things that we could put out there, the tow truck at the bank and the police counter cross and the three police officers at the end. You guys have really done a great job of responding to all this and that showed this weekend, that I, I was up and down there a few times going in and out of town and it was just perfect. It couldn't have been better. And, and Tony's also addressing some issues up with the harbor master, who has been doing a great job of policing the beaches and around town. But also they're going to put some buoys out there, Tony?
Yes.
Yep, that's the next, that's the next item on the agenda.
So before we, before we leave that, let, let me, excuse me, let me, let me just say that I, I think that Chief Dwyer and my careers parallel one another in the town of Nahat. And I can't, I can't agree any, any better than what Chief Dwyer had, had just said. He summarized it perfectly, I think.
Yeah.
And, and I think his, um, his, his force is doing a great job. These things happen and you have to react to them the best you can. And then they're doing the best they can. And I support Tony, your effort to, and the chief's effort to do a sign audit in the town and get that done. I think that will help a lot. So thank you, chief, and thank you to all you guys.
No, thank you. And one other thing I want to put out there as far as, when we try to, when I get a complaint, I just don't brush it off. I try to, you know, look into it, investigate it and try to, you know, I, and try to address it as best as possible. You know, so, so the WAF, we're getting a lot of calls, it's busy down there. So to address that issue, I, you know, we've been down there, we're going down there every eight or 10 minutes on a phone call for, for, you know, 20 kids, 30 kids jumping off the WAF. We, I understand the, the WAF situation better than most. However, when you get that amount of kids down at the WAF doing what they're doing, we get to a point where somebody could potentially get hurt. So what we did is we, I assigned emergency management down there, Kyle Macario, to do some community, emergency management policing, to give us a breakdown there to communicate with the, with the kids. And it's working, you know, it's working. And, and, you know, so we, we've calmed down that issue there for, for the time being. We can't be everywhere all the time. We try, we have roots, we have, we have plans. When we leave here on Friday, Saturday and Sunday mornings, we, we try to cover everything. But it only takes one, one emergency, you know, one medical aid or, you know, a lost child or, or it could be an arrest, hopefully we, we don't have to make, that could send our plan into a tailspin. So it's, it's, we do the best we can with what we have. I try to put the, you know, enough coverage on to, to protect the town. But like I said, these officers are going around the clock, so they need to get rest as well. So, but I appreciate everybody's support, you know, what we do and understand that we're there for, for the community. We're going to do the best we can to react to these and respond to these calls and solve as many problems as we can. Thank you.
And there's no better person than Kyle to communicate to those kids down there.
You got it.
Thanks, Kyle, for doing that. Appreciate it.
Yep, he's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or?
I was, I had myself muted, but I just wanted to ask, so Dan, if I understood correctly, if we want to allow ourselves the flexibility on a fee structure, that would have to be a town meeting vote?
No, the town meeting vote would be to adopt the stat, rescind the statute we adopted in 1964 and then accept the, the, another statute, the neighboring statute. And then that would empower the selectmen to choose the fee schedule from there. Town meeting does not set the violation schedule, that's a selectmen's duty. But the town meeting empowers them to do that.
But we would have to adopt the other statute at town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So we should probably create a warrant article to do that so that we have the flexibility and aren't boxed in by the current fee structure.
We're already in the process. We're in the process of doing that.
Yep, and I have it, I have it included in, in the draft for tonight.
Okay.
And, but Dan, just a point of clarification on that. We won't be able to go higher on our fees even by accepting the new chapter?
No, once we.
Go ahead.
Once we accept the new chapter, then yes, then we can increase the fees. But at the moment, we, we're frozen. We, we can't go any higher than we are. Once the new statute, then we can increase them. Actually, it's a pretty good amount, to be honest.
But we don't have to increase them.
No, you do not.
We could, we can, you know, get some input from Chief Dwyer and, you know, but it would be nice to have that flexibility, it seems to me.
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic? The next, the next item, 3G, excuse me, 3H, is a discussion regarding boating issues. I know Rob Tibbo's been, is on the, on the line. Rob and I spoke a little while ago. I just want to read the COVID-19 Phase 3 recreational boating rules. Safe operation recreational boats is permitted under the following guidelines. All users while on boat ramps, docks, gears, et cetera shall follow social distancing. All recreational boating is subject to the discretion of local officials, harbor masters and law enforcement. All local rules, regulations, laws and coast guard requirements still apply. So, this says that local officials, harbor masters and law enforcement can set the guidelines under the current COVID-19 Phase 3 guidelines. Talking to Rob earlier, one, one solution that Rob is going to implement is a swimming buoy in the Forty Steps Cove, so that some portion of that buoy, Cove is set aside for swimmers. And that limits the amount of area available for anchoring. We talked too about maximum number of boats rafting up. Rob suggested five as a maximum. I think that's a good place to start. That gives us, sort of the COVID-19 guidelines give us sort of a trial thing that we could revise under new guidelines or revise at any time, really. Rob, did you have anything you'd like to add? Is Rob muted? He is muted.
Let's see.
Tony, can you unmute? Rob Tibbo?
Can't find him.
Scroll across. He's there.
I have him right under Michelle Capano. It's on my screen.
Yeah.
What does it say on the, what's it say? Oh, there it is.
It's Rob Tibbo.
Yeah.
There he is.
There you go.
You're live, Rob.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to give you some input on this. Obviously, we're experiencing a small portion of what has been discussed by Chief Dwyer with respect to the parking issues and controlling people down at the wharf, et cetera. People are on staycation with the COVID-19 issue, and Nahat is the destination for many. It's not uncommon around Short Beach to go out in the midday Saturdays and Sundays, see boats from Beverly all the way down to Quincy as their home ports. These, these folks are picking up destination, four or five boats will get together and they'll go to that, that location for the day. Not such a big deal as far as space is a concern, as far as Short Beach is, has plenty of room. But we do have the COVID-19 issue as far as gatherings. And, and, you know, as Josh just read, we do have some authority over that, and I think it bears some consideration in that we get to five or 10 boats rafted together, you're talking about anywhere from 10 to 20 people all in a very, very compact area. And whether or not we want to speak to this is obviously up to, up to the selectmen. The other issue that we have is, is up at Forty Steps, the Forty Steps Beach area. Obviously, a very, very small cove, but also a destination, once again, for people coming from other cities and towns. We can see five, six, seven boats all rafted up together inside that cove, which, which makes me very nervous, given how little area there is on an outgoing tide. We could easily imagine some of those boats finding their way onto the rocks. The other problem that we have there is that we have a significant number of swimmers, both from the beach and from Castle Rock itself, even with the Nahat police trying their very best to, to keep people off of Castle Rock. It's, it's a constant battle. And we have swimmers bobbing everywhere throughout that cove, along with the boats. That is, to me, just a recipe for disaster. And whatever we can do to try and at least limit the boat traffic, I think is, is in our best interest. One of the quickest ways to apply some control here would be to decide that we're going to create a swimming area. Now, what the difference here is that over on Short Beach, we are establishing a no-wake zone. And then the harbor masters go into that no-wake zone and enforce it individually as far as boats that come within 150 feet of the swimming area. Obviously, the swimming area is an imaginary line that's moving with the tide. So, that one's a tough one also. But with, you know, just some diligence and cooperation, I think that we've been able to keep that in check. However, once again, over at Forty Steps, there's just no space. And my thought there is that we just basically close off at least half of that cove and say no boats in, inside the swimming area. And, and that should put us in a better position as far as controlling the number of boats that rafted up in there.
What about Canoe Beach?
I haven't seen the size of raftups in there that, that I have over in the Forty Steps Beach, but we could absolutely consider the same move there.
Now, the, the only problem with Canoe Beach, Robbie, is that what happens is when they rafted up, there's not as many boats, but they're in closer.
They are, yeah, okay.
And I think that they're pushed in closer because there's a rock formation there that they try to stay away from. So, they'd either have to go outside it or inside it. But I, I agree. I, I think that doing what you're doing over in Forty Steps is a good idea.
Well, we could, we could do it on both, Gene, and just basically drop a buoy in both coves and just say, you know, anything beyond this is a swimming area, all boats have to stay outside of it. It's, it just, you know, it depends on, you know, how strictly we want to, want to move on this. I think also another issue that we have is that geographically, those beaches may have more of an incline. So, there's, there's a much bigger change in, in the, in the water as, as the tides come in and out, the depth of the water, how much the shoreline moves, things like that. You know, obviously, this is a little bit of a challenge for, for me and the harbor masters in that those, those beaches are also, they become washing machines in any, any kind of a storm situation. So, we might be chasing buoys all over the place, but we're willing to give it a shot.
Oh, that'd be great. That would really be good. I think you'd have a lot of people up there that would be happy to hear that, or see that.
So, this is listed on the agenda as a discussion. And the COVID-19 rules do allow for local officials, harbor masters and law enforcement to set the rules. So, we could, we could try to make a motion that captures those, or we could potentially make a motion to give Rob the authority under the COVID-19 Phase 3 rules to set those as he sees fit. Any thoughts, Gene or Mark?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would move to allow the harbor master to enforce what he feels is appropriate under the circumstances.
I think, I think.
You got a second on that?
A second? I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? I guess I do have one more thing to add, tangentially related, which is Tony and I looked up the police bylaw rules on noise or noise ordinances. And there are noise ordinances on the police bylaws that boil down to be considerate and don't make too much noise. So, those are available as tools for law enforcement as well. There have been some complaints about excess noise from rafted up boats. So, that's another tool that's available. That's all I had.
But that, that does have to be included in this motion, right? Because it's already in effect.
Right, yeah, that doesn't, that's just a little bit of a side topic, but.
Rob, you just one word. What do you consider to be a safe rafting limit?
Well, Gene, geographics play some, some, some part of it. Once again, I, I would feel more comfortable if we didn't have more than three in, in say Forty Steps. But once we get over to Short Beach, we could, we could certainly have more. So, I guess I'm, I'm falling back on what I've been reading as far as COVID-19 restrictions and say that maybe we should be trying to keep the number of people in small area, which would be a raft up in this case, to as close to 10 as possible. So, you know, loosely saying that maybe we have two, possibly three persons per boat, you know, maybe, maybe five's the number.
Five is the number of boats rafting?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go along with whatever you suggest.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too. And the nice thing about the motion that's on the table is you get to choose it. If it's not working, if it's not working for you, Rob, you get to revise it.
Exactly.
Roll call vote. Josh Adstrom, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Capano, aye.
So, I'll connect with, I'll just connect with the, with the harbor master then, and what he is, whatever he, whatever he puts in place there, we'll make sure it's, you know, posted at the wharf and on the website or something like that. And as it changes, you know, we'll make sure that it's publicly available.
Yeah, make sure it gets on the website and if, maybe on the Nahat Town Hall Facebook page as well.
Tony and Josh, could I just have a quick moment?
Yes.
Yeah. Just want to mention what a, what a tremendous job our police department has been doing as far as trying to control the, the kids that we've had down the wharf. We've had large crowds, as you, as you've discussed earlier, and putting, putting Carl Macario on, on the wharf on a part-time basis has been a tremendous help. You know, I just want to, I just want to tell you that the sailing program is obviously working under quite a strain this year. And I think they've done also magnificent work in, in trying to keep the children safe. Their challenge obviously is elevated when, you know, they've, they've done everything they can to distance their kids and keep everything sanitized. But then you have 10 or five, 10, 15 or 20 people show up to go swimming off the wharf and, and start horsing around down there. Everything kind of goes out the window. So, what, what I've seen is an effort to restrict that area, especially during sailing program hours, to people in the sailing program and to people who are actually using the pier for boating purposes. And, and this is, this has been a, a great help. And I, I'm truly grateful for it, and I know that it's going to make a big difference. So, thank you.
I, I'd actually like to add to that, too. The, I've heard nothing but positive compliments about the instructors of the sailing program. And, you know, these are teenage instructors that have, you know, really taken the COVID compliance piece or added layer to their typical summer job and have done a tremendous job down there. So, I too want to just thank them and publicly and congratulate them for the great work they've done. I think there's only a couple more weeks left in the sailing program, but I've heard nothing but, you know, great things about how they've taken on that challenge.
Item four, ongoing business for a preserving East Point continuing discussion. Mark or Gene, do you have something you want to say about this? Or are we looking for community input?
Yeah, I, let me first say, Josh, I, I think you covered it in your opening comments on the, on the cases that the, the courts have ruled on, on behalf of the Town Hall. So, I'm really encouraged by those, those rulings. I think they're very positive. And, you know, hopefully, we can get some more information out to the town. I know that depending on what happens to the town meeting and what we can put on the agenda or not, on the warrant or not, you know, we'll see. But I think that, I think that, you know, the, this discussion is going to be important and we'll see what happens.
Yeah. I'd like to add that I really encourage people to take the time to read the first and second statements by the Board of Selectmen that are posted on the nahat.org website. I know they're a little long, but there's a lot of information in there. So, if you're truly curious about the eminent domain process, why it's being pursued, what the financial implications of eminent domain and, and expanded northeastern are to the town, I would highly recommend that people read that and get educated in those topics. I also like to add that I do have a Facebook account, and I look at it and I see questions being asked. Many of them would be answered if they, if people read that statement. But if they still have remaining questions, please know that that is not a formal format for asking the questions of the Board of Selectmen. If you, all our, all our email addresses are on nahat.org. Feel free to email. Feel free to use Citizens Forum. We're not going to be responding on Facebook. Gene, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just I think Mark said it right. You've, you've just added to it. And I think what's important to all of us is that we get this information, this data, this analytical information out to people so that they can more clearly understand what is circulating and what should or should not be circulating. And I, I think maybe as, as the Board of Selectmen, we probably should take a suggestion that we should take that second statement and reduce it, make it more simple and get that out as soon as we can. Because leading up to this, one thing people have to understand, and I've been pressing this over the last couple of months, is that they control what happens. It's their vote. And the only way we're going to be able to get their vote, positive or negative, is to, to present them with the information that they need to do that.
Yep. And that's, that's what we're trying to do with these, with these statements. And, you know, that's a good suggestion, Gene, is to simplify some of this stuff. But, you know, I would encourage people to ask questions. You know, this, the second statement in particular on the finances, it's, it's a working document. If people morally submit a question, and it merits response, you know, we'll happily edit that document so it is more inclusive of anything that seems to be missing.
If people would.
Josh.
Go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, Gene. I, I would just add to that, Josh, that the comments in, what we put in our second statement is based on discussions with professionals. in our second statement is based on discussions with professionals, whether attorneys, whether appraisers. Our discussion in that second statement was based on professional opinions. And I think that's important, that people understand that we are reaching out to professionals in order to make the right decision for the town.
Agreed.
And I think when you read that statement, it become apparent that eminent domain is in fact the most fiscally prudent choice. It results in saving that area from development and saving taxpayer dollars. So I'd definitely continue to encourage people to read that. And again, echoing what Mark just said, we consulted with professional appraisal, land appraiser people with decades of experience in this field. Same thing with the legal professionals. These are legal professionals that have experience with eminent domain, know what the litigation costs typically are. So if someone's just making up numbers, make sure they have decades of experience in whatever number they're making up. Because that statement is based on the opinions of experts with many years of experience. Anything? Is there any more discussion?
Hang on. There's a comment in the group chat, but I don't know if you want to take it now or if you want to wait for Citizens Forum.
So, well, the question is from Michelle Capano, and the question is, you have an executive summary in your BOS statement number two, if that's a question. If it is a question, the answer is yes. There's an executive summary in.
There's one from Ken Corando as well. Do you want to take it now?
Taking, oh. Regarding the proposed CPA borrowing and eminent domain, if the final pro tanto amount awarded is greater than $4 million, the CPT, CPT?
I mean, CPT, sorry.
And now the Board of Selectmen expects what to happen. So the question boils down to, okay, so I'll read, he has listed some options here. A, the donors make up the difference. B, the taxpayers make up the difference. C, eminent domain is dropped, or other. Please specify. I guess the answer is D. Although, based on two experienced land appraisers, it seems highly unlikely that the pro tanto will exceed $4 million. In the event that does, we are working on a financial backstop that is still in process. We will have that plan fully defined before town meeting, when anyone's in a position to need to vote. I guess I'd say it could consist of, A, private donors. It will not, we won't put forth any backstop that relies on the taxpayers in Nahat. We won't do that. But it will likely be some combination of private donors, nonprofit organization support, grants, and other potential vehicles. But that plan is being worked actively, and we do understand that's an important question you ask, Ken. So I appreciate you asking that. And we will present the, will the, before town meeting so that that can be considered before they vote. That answer your question?
It does, to the extent you, it does, to the extent you can at this point, the backstop will be, obviously.
We will have a backstop vehicle. Any other discussion or questions in the chat? Questions? All right, so moving on. Close annual town meeting warrant. So, Mark, do you want to make a motion here?
I'm looking at, I moved that the Board of Selectmen, no, excuse me. I'm a little ahead of myself here. We are, we are on ongoing business?
Yeah, I can read, I'll read the motion for you while you...
I have it, Josh.
Okay.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to open September 26, 2020, annual town meeting warrant for submitted articles for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant as provided by the town administrator.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adding to the list of articles here that's in front of you, Article 28, Senior Deferred Property Tax Interest. This is proposed by the Board of Assessors to see if the town will vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible seniors under General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, from 4% to 2.5%. Such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2020. Dan's on the call if you have any questions about this article specifically, but the Board of Assessors would be presenting this at town meeting. Dan, do you have any background on this one?
No, not on this one, I don't. We talked about the veterans' work off, but not this particular one. This was, I would defer this one to Sheila, if she's still on board here.
I don't see her on here anymore, but essentially, this is...
Harry or David Hunt?
I don't see them on here, but they'll be prepared to speak to it at town meeting or in any type of information session prior, leading up to it. Article 29, sale of town-owned land, and Article 30, discontinue a portion of Antigua Way. So both of these articles here have to do with what was brought up at the last Board of Selectmen meeting from Mr. Cardilli about the front steps of his house extending on to the actual right-of-way there or the street. And it requires a vote of town meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to pursue a sale, and it also to abandon that portion of the property. Dan, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, it should be clear that this will be vetted by the Town Own Land Study Committee as well after town meeting. So they need to be involved and will be involved. And this is similar to what we saw over on Bayview. And I don't believe there's any butler that is opposing this, unlike Bayview. So we've been through this process before. It's a very small piece of property. I think it's 192 square feet. I'm looking at the numbers here. So it's tiny. And it's a dead-end street that probably no one in Nahat hardly even knows where it is. It's just very isolated. So it's nothing new, and we're just trying to clean some stuff up for Mr. Cardilli.
Any questions from the Board on either of those?
No.
Okay, and then Article 31, tree bylaws. This is a requirement to become a tree city to see if the town will vote to adopt a new article. And we don't know what article of the bylaws that'll be quite yet. But so it's listed there as IX. Is that a placement, Dan, or is that Article 19?
It would be, it would be, I'm pulling it up now. Hold on, give me a second here. Let me pull it up.
No, anyways, you know, where it fits into the bylaws, it'll have the appropriate article number there, but...
It would be the end of the general bylaws.
Okay, the end of the general bylaws, the preservation of the tree canopy, the planting of replacement trees, the protection of air quality, and the creation of a Nahat Tree Task Force, or take any other action relative thereto. I know that Zach Taylor, our superintendent is supportive of this, and groups in Nahat, that becoming a tree city, it allows us to fund, have some dedicated funding towards the preservation of trees in town. I'm sure they'll be prepared to speak to this at town meeting as well.
And we should point out, Tony, that this is really a few different suggested bylaws that will sort of weave in and out of Chapter 87. And a copy of these bylaws will be in the town clerk's office once we finalize them on our end moving forward. And VIPatech is very much involved in this, so we're working with her in that regard.
And, okay, and Article 32 is parking violations. This is what we talked about earlier today about, earlier in the meeting, rescinding Chapter 90, Section 20A, as voted in the 1964 Annual Town Meeting, and accepting General Law Chapter 90, Section 20A and a half, which will provide us that flexibility that we spoke about earlier regarding parking fees. And as we mentioned, so those are the new articles that are in front of you right now. And as we mentioned, you know, we'll have probably one more opportunity to adjust the warrant as we see fit before the FinCom needs, you know, a truly final version that needs to get sent to the printer for the book. Any questions on that? Okay, so that's discussion, so you have to take a vote.
Roll call vote. Josh Hadrom, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Conlon, aye.
All right, now we have to close the warrant. Gene, do you want to close it?
Okay, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to close the September 26, 2020, annual town meeting warrant.
Any discussion? Hearing and hearing none. Roll call vote. Josh Hadrom, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Conlon, aye.
All right, next item, item 5A, well, item five is the town administrator report. Tony?
Yep, so I have Johnson Elementary School COVID reopening update. We did end up talking about this earlier in the night. For anybody that joined on later, there was a meeting last night with the school committee, and there'll be another one tomorrow night and Tuesday night. For anybody that wants to participate in that, if you just go to nahat.org in the community calendar and click on the date, there's a link to the agenda and a link to participate remotely. You know, as I mentioned, there was over 60 participants last night, and we expect more to come. And we will be, we'll have this on the agenda, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen as the Board of Health, with the school committee in your next meeting in two weeks for a little briefing from them. And they're doing a remarkable job. They're taking, they really are taking, you know, we have somewhat of the luxury in Nahat is space in our school to spread kids out where other communities don't have that. And they are, you know, utilizing that appropriately and doing everything they can. And Superintendent Parentozzi is, you know, great to work with as well. And as well as, and Deb, you're on the phone still, right, Deb?
Yes, I am, Tony.
I want to give a shout out to Patty Sheehan for the work that she's been doing, but I know you can speak better to it than I can.
Right. Patty's been, she's been amazing on the committee. She has, you know, her field is research. So she has researched probably every article written about school reopening. And yesterday, she asked me for all of our statistics for Nahat, and she put together, you know, beautiful graphs of, you know, what our cases actually look like. And she presented, she presented that at last night's meeting. Not, she presented it as she was speaking. So I imagine tomorrow she'll get into it and get into more depth. But the whole committee, I have to say, not just the school reopening committee, but the school committee itself, I was really so impressed with Lawrence Sherlock as the new chairperson of the school committee. And it was a very long meeting last night with lots of participants, and she had a parent's forum. And everybody, you know, every parent had a chance to talk about it and express their concerns. And, I mean, it's such a big, it's a big deal, you know, trying to reopen the school now. But I think the best people possible are trying to make this happen. And you're right, Tony, Tony P., our superintendent, he did a great job fielding all the questions and trying to be very transparent. And so it was great. It was a great meeting, and tomorrow will probably be the same.
So, you know, we are pushing that campaign of mask up for the kids. You know, one thing that Deb mentioned earlier is it really is a community effort. It's not just a parent effort or a kid or a student effort. It's a community effort. And to ensure that it's a successful reopening, really encouraging folks to take social distancing serious and to mask up as much as possible. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next up is Citizens Forum. Tony, I guess we have maybe a couple chats that need to be answered.
Yeah, I have, I have one in here from Cora Long, so that she dialed in a little bit late, but in the middle of the discussion on the trash fees. But was there a discussion on raising fees for multifamilies? Cora, are you still on the call?
She is. I can see her.
Oh, yeah, here she is. I can see her, too. So, yeah, so trash fees have gone, have typically, trash bills have gone out by now. We have delayed the bills going out due to the restructuring of the contract. And our contract, our contract for our hauling service waste management was up this past year. And we unfortunately are, you know, negotiating during a time where trash fees and trash rates, recycling rates are increasing globally. Not, you know, it's not just here, it's around the world because of restrictions in China with pollution restrictions and things of that nature. So we signed a one-year deal with Waste Management mostly because of that uncertainty, plus the uncertainty of our own revenues in town and potential recession with... and, um, potential recession with, um, with coronavirus impacts. So we really, we really weren't in a position to sign a long-term deal, so we signed a one-year deal. Um, but that one-year deal does come with a, with a pretty significant increase in cost. And it really kind of, along with, you know, we had an override last year. Um, we know that water, uh, water rates have been increasing from MWRA. Sewer rates have been increasing with Lynn Water Sewer and the closure of Gorilic Farms, plus a number of capital needs that we have. So in all of those little bubbles, we are doing everything we can to try to suppress the increase in these fees to the bill, to the ratepayer, to the taxpayer. Um, so when it, when you were looking at trash, we were, we really looked at how is it being distributed? Not, you know, not only what goes into that total amount for the enterprise fund, and then how is that, um, then distributed amongst the ratepayers of the town? So we took a look at that and found that, um, the way that we have it currently set up was that, uh, you know, multifamily homes, you know, classified as multifamily homes with the assessor's office. So legal two families, legal three families, legal four families. Commercial entities that have residential with them or commercial entities that have, um, private hauling service or you, or utilize the public hauling service. And all those different categories of users and how they should be, uh, how they should contribute to the cost of trash removal. And one, one thing we found was that, uh, multifamily residential properties were being charged one fee, uh, similar to a one-family home. So for example, a four-family home was being charged one fee, um, instead of four. So by taking, um, that information, that data from the assessor's office as to truly how many units of homes there are in town and, and, um, charging them a trash, trash fee, it actually increases the total amount of users in the system, thus spreading out the total cost of that enterprise account among more users and allowing us to help suppress the, the increase being charged to us from the hauling service. Does that make sense?
Um, yes, your, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, your explanation definitely makes sense. However, I don't agree with your, um, calculations. Um, there are three times more illegal, um, in-law apartments that have more people. I mean, I have a multifamily, there are four adults in this house. But my neighbor has four adults and has a daycare. My other neighbor has six, uh, kids and two adults. So I don't understand how that calculation actually is right. I mean, we did at one point have per census. If you're, this, per census, you have seven people registered in your house. Well, it's per, that's what you pay your trash on. And how do you, I mean, what about the businesses? What about the daycares? Do they pay more in a single-family house?
Probably not right now. Um, that's those, that's definitely something that is part of the discussion that we're having right now of how to, how to spread it out evenly or fairly. Um, you know, it's, I appreciate your comment. Like, we didn't have a vote on it tonight, still in discussion of it, so I appreciate your comment. Um, you know, trying to capture those illegal two families or three, or multifamilies is, uh, something that we're looking at. Um, but certainly, you know, the other side of it is that legitimate multifamilies only being charged one trash fee isn't right either. So we're trying to make it fair across the board. Um, and that's definitely something that we're looking at is how to capture some of those other, those other units that you mentioned.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Swans.
Sure.
To your point, it's, it's not going to be a perfect system, we do the best we can. If, if you know of, I, I can say there's nothing on our list regarding daycare. So if, the list we're creating for the, for the Waste Management, Rotherstone. So if you know of a daycare, then I suggest you, you email Sheila in the assessor's office and we'll address it. But, um, it, it, it's not going to be perfect, so there's going to be a lot of these sort of unknown apartments and those Airbnb's that aren't registered with the town yet anyway, that, that we just don't know about. So it was up to folks like you to come say, hey, there's an issue here. And, but it's got to be on the record in writing, and we should receive it through, through the town hall.
Okay, they're, they're registered, they're registered businesses in town.
I know of no daycare, I've never, I've not even seen.
We do have, we do have registered daycares in town, but they may not be on the list that we're working on.
They're not on the list we have, they're not on the list we have, so that's something we can deal with.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I would like to point out another issue, um, regarding the trash. And this came up two years ago where a business owner from another town brings his trash to our town, and it's being picked up by our services. So, and that's still going on. So there's, I, I think if there's a fee per bag or, um, a limited, what you can put out there would be sort of easier and would eliminate the overall cost for the elders that is living on their own and only have two bags, as opposed to the person that has, you know, six people in the house and have 25 bags. Thank you, guys.
But, well, didn't Swanscott just go to a new system where they have one barrel of 35-ouncer? And if you wanted to, to trash more, you had to buy bags, I think it was five for $10?
Yes, it's a pay-as-you-throw system. And it, you know, it certainly comes with growing pains. Uh, I don't think it's, you know, the, the installment of that, of that new system, um, hasn't gone exactly smooth in Swanscott at the moment. Um, but over time, many communities, uh, adjust to, to it. Uh, it takes, it takes some time to get comfortable with that type of system and kind of anticipate when you're going to need more bags, um, as a, as a household. Um, but that's something that we, you know, we've, we've been looking at as well with switching to automated collection with limited, uh, limited trash amounts per household. Um, that's something that we've been looking at as well. Our current one-year contract does not include that. It's something that we, we hope to have a larger public process over the next year before we agree to a new, uh, contract going forward. Um, I, I will say that in the past, um, you know, the town had a fee system that was based on how many people were in a home. Um, how many, you know, residents actually lived in a house. And, and we had a lot of, you know, a lot of false reporting on how many, you know, in order to pay less of a trash fee. And that became an issue, an administrative nightmare for the town, this is years ago. And so the town switched over to a, to a single rate, which has been very low, um, you know, compared to other towns, and hasn't changed in probably the last, I think, six years. Uh, so trying to maintain that low rate for all and capture as many people as possible has been our goal. And Cora, if you, um, if you could, you know, maybe take some of the comments that you, that you mentioned on here and, and send them in an email over to, um, myself, uh, at abarletta@nahot.org, that, that we would love to include that in our conversations.
Um, totally, definitely, I will do that, Tony. And I'll also take some pictures of, um, the trash that's coming from one particular house that has two people in it, and it's coming from the business out of town, disposed of in town.
I've had, I've had that issue come up in other, I, I don't know if it's the same issue that you're bringing up, and we can talk about it.
Yes, it is.
Um, and, and I've, and I've had to address that in the past before, so I'm happy to revisit it if, if need be, or if it's something new, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, let's connect on it.
Tony, a conversation for, a conversation for another night. But what about Airbnb's? Uh, uh, because they seem to be popping up.
So we have, so one thing, one article in the town meeting is to, um, is to adopt the local hotels', um, tax. And with that, also create a committee to, uh, develop a, uh, regulations for Airbnb's for the town of AHOT. Right now, all we have on, um, on file is regulations for bed and breakfasts. And they don't, they actually don't, Airbnb's don't qualify under our current, uh, tax. So, um, we really need, you know, it's going to take some time. And, and I know that, I, I think a handful of people have already, uh, reached out and said, if, you know, if that passes, I'd love to be on the committee and help out with that. So it's something that we need to, you know, we need to organize a committee to spend some more time and take a look at what other communities have in place, because it's definitely becoming, um, a larger issue. I think when, I think there, I think over the course of a year, there's got to be 200, almost, I think our initial research said somewhere around 200 households that at one point or multiple points throughout the year, 200 different households in the AHOT will, will rent their property through Airbnb. So there's a big, there's a big chunk of, of homes that fall into that category. So we definitely need to take a closer look at it.
Well, yeah, for, for certain.
Um, all right, so, let's see. Uh, next comment is from Candace Cahill, are you still online? Candace, can you, um, mute you?
I'm unmuted, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my question was, I understand that, I, I look at these through Zoom or calling in, but I understand that the meeting is no longer televised. And I was curious why, because we have a large group of residents that are not computer savvy and can't access the internet or Zoom calls and computers. So I'm wondering why we haven't fixed that.
Well, unfortunately, uh, in the coronavirus-type world that we're living in now, we have to host our meetings virtually. And, um, when we were able to, uh, host them or publish them live on TV, um, that was really in, in link with allowing a public, um, participation forum live there at the town hall. So people could actually participate by coming to the town hall and, and, um, watching live and asking questions live. Uh, so, you know, that's our, that's our number one priority, is making these meetings public and have the ability for people to participate. So, you know, honestly, it just kind of comes into a technical issue when you're trying to do both.
So I understand, sorry, go on.
We had a couple meetings that were in the town hall and also broadcasted on Zoom and on the TV. And we had a lot of technical issues with sound and visual, uh, for people on both. You know, some people on, on Zoom couldn't hear, or some people on TV couldn't, couldn't hear. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of mixed issues there.
I guess my only challenge to, to the piece about having not available to ask questions, if you look at how many people ever ask questions on these calls, there's only a handful. So I don't think being able, the ability to ask questions should matter. I think it's really some way needs to be figured out, and I can't believe it's that hard in this day and age to not be able to take a computer and hook it up to the Zoom call and however they do it on the back end into the, um, however you were transmitting it onto the community channel.
Uh, I mean, I, I guess it's up to the selectmen. If they prefer not to have people participate in the meeting, we can, we can eliminate that portion of it.
Well, I'm not really saying eliminate.
Combining the two.
I'm not saying eliminate the ability to ask questions. I'm just saying if, if we're not correcting the problem for somebody that's sitting at the Jesmond or somewhere else and wants to watch what's going on in the town, they have no ability to do this now. And if it's just because we don't want to do it, or we're, we're looking into other solutions because they can't ask questions, hardly anyone ever asks questions on these meetings. So I think they should still be able to watch. Whether or not they have the ability to ask a question is a separate issue.
Candace, why can't they, why can't they call? In our, in, in that scenario, um, capturing both, if someone is simply wanting to watch and not participate, they can, they can do so by, um, we, we post them on the, on the, on the website. But we could, we could take, we could download the recorded file of this meeting tonight, for instance, for example, and run it on the local TV channel afterwards. Um, and then, you know, so the, the issue comes, the technical issue is doing both live at the same time. So, uh, we could certainly capture some of those folks who simply want to follow along but don't have the desire to participate by presenting the recorded version of this meeting onto the channel, the local TV channel after it's done. Um, it does take some time to download and format it and upload it onto the channel, but, so there'd be some delay.
I think that's a great interim solution, um, but would it run more than once? I mean, it's not just going to run tonight after the meeting, could they watch it tomorrow or?
Yeah.
Some other.
Yep. Yeah, we could definitely set it on a, we could have it looped so it's on continuously until, you know, maybe until the next meeting is uploaded.
Hey, Tony, it's Michelle. Um, just wanted to chime in here. Do you have statistics on how many residents or households in town have cable television versus like DirecTV? And if they have cable television, they may have, you know, advanced versions of the apps. So they would be able to get the YouTube app on their TV, and then you could livestream it simultaneously while you're running Zoom, and then air it later on the local cable station. Then you're still hitting a larger population who isn't using the Zoom app or computer, but they'll still be able to watch it on TV because it's being livestream on YouTube.
Yeah, uh, I don't know, you know, I don't know what type of technical issues we would run into trying to stream it on YouTube at the same time as conducting it through Zoom. Um, but we could try it. And we could find out how many people have cable Verizon or Comcast by asking our representatives from both of those companies. Um, I mean, I think that, I understand, I understand where both of you guys are coming from. Um, I, we are doing everything we can to continue to operate regularly and have committee meetings. Many communities have stopped committee meetings completely. And we felt strongly that we had to continue to, to operate, uh, on multi-level, you know, multiple levels, not just the Board of Selectmen, but Comcast, ZBA, Planning Board, assessors, um, FinCom. And we are doing, you know, as much as we possibly can to continue to do that in a transparent way. Um, and, you know, I, I, it may seem simple, uh, from your perspective that to just simply get it to stream on TV, it's just, it just isn't that simple. And it just, you know, we'll do whatever we can to try to publish these things as best as possible so people can follow along. Unfortunately, you know, we're, we're, we're living in a, a different time right now and doing the best we can with the circumstances we have. So we'll try and see if we can get these looped on the local channel after they're recorded and downloaded and uploaded. Streaming them live in multiple, under multiple software programs or different types of technology programs, it's just not that simple, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Well, Candace, this is something that Tony and I spent quite a bit of time talking about on the phone the other day. And we'll try to come up with an improved situation and let everybody know what that improved situation will be, you know, let's say by the posting of the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I think even if you could put this meeting up and let people at their leisure watch it, that would work.
Sounds like we'll be able to do that.
All right, thank you.
Are you on, on the phone still or on Zoom? I'm sorry, are you still on here?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to speak to your comment?
Yeah, sure. I was just curious about, I followed the last few meetings. I heard you speak about some culverts, particularly on Castle Road. And I was just curious how that was going. You mentioned a couple of grants and things. And I guess my comment's pretty self-explanatory, but I could read it if you'd like.
No, I'm just catching up on it right now. So, I mean, simply looking for an update?
Yeah.
Like the lowland drainage issue?
Right, and specifically about Castle Road. I was just curious if you guys are actually zoning in on a larger round pipe that would go under what, between like 35 Castle and the other one? Or if you were looking at a much larger box culvert that would extend through that ditch area on Ward Road to Doggy Beach? I was just curious about that.
Well, I would say, you know, we're looking at a lot of different things. You know, it's really an engineering, it's really an engineering effort. I know Mark has spent some time talking with Zach and Tony and our town engineer. And Tony and Zach and I have talked about it. You know, it's, it's, it's not a simple situation there. We've got pipes going various ways. And so I guess the fair answer right now would be, we're looking at what would be the best engineering solution to the drainage problem we have there, both on a routine basis and on an emergency basis. But I don't think we're prepared to say we're going to put a, you know, what we're going to do with a particular culvert or vault in Castle Road and so on.
Yeah, well, that's awesome feedback, Josh. I was just curious how the, how the process was coming along. And it's, it's nice to know that, that it is coming along and that you're getting close.
You were on the line last week. Sorry, I think I interrupted you, Shannon.
Oh, thanks, buddy, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, at the last meeting, you know, all three selectmen and the town administrator, you know, reaffirmed our commitment to take action for that area, that lowland area.
Yeah, I heard that and I was excited about that. And that's why I asked the question. And thank you so much for everything that you're doing on that front. I know that that's a lot of work.
Yeah, well, it's important, so we're gonna, we're gonna get it done.
Awesome, thank you.
Perfect response there, Josh. Yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely a priority of the selectmen and myself. And, and, you know, we're continuing to take a look at it. You know, especially with, you know, the ongoing, the increase in storms and the severity of storms, it's something that, you know, is, is at the top of our list, so.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate that too.
There was a chat that scrolled off the top of my screen, but Alice Court was asking if the town warrants will still be printed in mail through, and the answer, yes.
Josh, I'm sorry, Josh, for interrupting. Backtrack a little, I was muted, so I wasn't able to get involved with that last conversation. But I did spend some time with Tony and W down on Ward Road and Castle Road. And I think, I think we have a good solution coming up. And hopefully, we'll be able to resolve some of the funding issues.
Well, that's great, Mark. I appreciate that too. Thank you.
Yes, so the next one was from Alice Court. Alice, do you want me to read it or would you prefer to say it yourself?
No, Josh just answered the question just before Mark spoke. So I was just wondering if there was going to be a change in the distribution of the warrant? And he said that it's going to be printed and mailed. And I think that's great. I think that's what should happen. Thanks.
Tony, just make sure, well, we talked about this last Friday, I believe, that that was the agreement.
You know, it's not, it's, it's not really, it's a FinCom book, right? So it's up to the Finance Committee. But they do have to meet the bylaw, which says that they must cause to be delivered seven days prior to town meeting, a copy of the warrant with their recommendations to every household that has a voter in it. You know, now typically, that's the full book. You know, 60, 70 pages of a book. And one thing that the FinCom was looking at was, you know, timing wise, when you're, when you're producing that type of mailing, it adds time and money to the process. But the, but the bylaw doesn't say that the full book, you know, with all that background detail that's in there necessarily has to be mailed. It's simply the warrant and the recommendations. So one thing that the, that was under consideration was, you know, could we save some time and money by sending a simplified, you know, just simply the warrant with the recommendation, which is more like 20 pages, to every voter? And then have the full book available online and available at town meeting for when people show up. They, I don't think they've made a decision on that. And, but ultimately, it's. So as of right now, I would expect a full book. If that, if that's the change, I'm sure there'll be a lot of public discussion on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be very difficult to evaluate things if you're just getting a lot more information, another 50 pages of information when you show up to the meeting, which is occurring in a field, presumably out in the sun and so forth. I think that that would be difficult if you want to formulate questions or if you have any concerns about some of the, the items that are being added at that time. So I don't have a good sense of what, what's in those 50 pages that takes it from the 20 pages of warrant material plus their recommendations to the 70-page booklet.
A lot of it is.
Makes it a lot more difficult for citizens to adequately vote on things. I would just be concerned about that.
Yeah, a lot of it is, a lot of it is, I don't, you know, certainly it wouldn't be an intent, you know, of any intent or desire to limit information to the, to the residents who are coming to vote. I think a lot of the, a lot of that extra stuff in the book is historical data on, you know, previously approved funding under CPC, CPC funding articles. And sometimes, you know, like depending on what's on the warrant, like for instance, when the Wetlands bylaw, there was a ton of, you know, maps and language and regulations that was included in the back of the book too. So I hear you, Alice, and I'll relay that to the FinCom. You know, I would expect a full book at this point.
Numbers that he has back here. Again, I'm watering the sewer.
The next is Peggy Silver.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's quite obvious to most of us, but no matter where you go in town, whether it's the beach, walking, the post office, our stores, whatever, everyone is talking about preserving East Point and the Northeastern expansion. That's top on everybody's mind. I'm even getting, with other people who got in the mail, a letter in the mail from concerned citizens, I think there was about 35 or so of them, but a letter in the mail saying about the issues. And then on social media, there's all these conversations and confusion and stories and discussions. And I would just like to say that we elected you. We elected you, the Board of Selectmen, and I trust you. I trust the three of you to find out the most knowledgeable people that you can deal with. And you are the ones that have the authority. Not all these people on social media or anything, but you're the ones that have the authority to deal with Northeastern, to deal with the legal aspects, to deal with conservation groups, the legislature, NIFA, you know? And I think that most people trust you and would like to hear from you. I was very impressed with the statement that you made, the second statement that came out about preserving East Point. And I just wonder if there was a way that you, I know it's online and on the website, but it's very difficult to find. I mean, you kind of have to maneuver yourself around. And like even to go to what like Candace just said, a lot of people can't do that. Well, I guess I just had trouble with it too. But if there was a way that it could be mailed, if other, if it could be mailed out to every citizen, it was so informative. And I just think that everybody should be able to see it, the second statement, and would like hearing from you, our leaders. What do they say? Everything comes from the top, right? So if there's a problem, I guess somewhere along the line, somebody said there might be a problem with the cost, it's like you were just saying, the cost of the warrant. I'd be willing to donate some money that it would go to the citizens of Nahat. And I'm sure others would. So it's just, just something I believe that you, you are the ones that have the most authority, that I think you are the ones that know or would find out most about appraisals and sewers and water and what everything is going to cost. Or if you didn't, you would find the people that could. So I think there's a real trust issue with you guys. And we want, we believe in you. So if there could be any way to send out that second statement, it would be wonderful.
Thank you, Peggy.
I agree, I agree with what you said. I, you know, I mentioned earlier that it's really important for people to read this second statement.
It is.
Financial concerns. I saw a copy of that letter that was mailed to residents and, well, I guess I won't comment too much on that, other than to say there was no reference to the cost to Nahat for hosting an expanded Northeastern. Certainly that comes with a cost. The second statement from the Board of Selectmen says that that cost is 17 to 22 million over the next 40 years. So 40 years is a long time. That number was chosen because it exceeds the bond payments in the CPC application. But any compensation, to my mind, any compensation from Northeastern, less than 17 million is a money loser for the town of Nahat. And that means the taxpayers. So if we allow a building up there, in a natural resource district, by the way, where you and I are not allowed to build, the town of Nahat voted to make that area a natural resource district 29 years ago, with the support of Northeastern, by the way. And that means according to Nahat zoning bylaws, nothing except recreational buildings are allowed there. And so by permitting Northeastern to build there, we're allowing violation of our own Nahat zoning bylaw and subsidizing with our taxes because they aren't paying taxes. And even any offer they have made thus far comes not even close to the tax burden that you and I, all the taxpayers of Nahat pay. And so the win-win situation in my mind here is take control of the property by eminent domain, which is cheaper than supporting Northeastern and the expanded campus they have in mind. So I. Distribution of that second statement because I think it's important to get in the hands of everybody.
Well, it's a very complicated, as everybody, everyone, single citizens in town knows, it's a very complicated issue. And the numbers, the numbers that are going back and forth, you just, you really don't know which numbers are which. And so that's why I just thought that hearing from you guys would be the best. So thank you.
Definitely support getting that out into as many hands as possible because it's just important to, you know, it's an important vote for the town because it's a forever vote, right? This is not, you know, you know, are we gonna have an extra $50,000 for the library this year? This is, this is something that affects the town for the rest of history of the town. So it's an important vote. It's important for everyone to have the real facts, not make up numbers, rely on experts in their fields to establish these numbers. I guess I'll stop talking for a minute.
So can we mail it out so we can have some real numbers? I mean, like you said, it affects every person in this town. Personally, I mean, I couldn't live further away from East Point. I'm probably, you know, in Little Nahat here where the Causeway's the next stop. But it is important, I feel, for the town. So, but it's important that we all know the numbers too.
And I think, you know, even if you never go to East Point, even if you've never been to East Point, if you pay taxes in Nahat, you would support eminent domain strictly to keep your taxes down. That's my view, and that's what's hoped by the second statement.
Yeah, that's why we need the information mailed out, right? Yeah, good. Thanks for your consideration.
Peg and Josh, let me, let me chime in here. I think it is important to get the information, you know, I think it is important to make the information based on facts and data and experts and professionals in this area who understand what the real costs are for this, for the towns, towns taxpayers. And, you know, I think we can, we can, we can get this information out. And if it, I don't think it, I don't think it requires the cost of the taxpayers, but I think there are people that are willing to put up the money to make sure this information is disseminated to the, to the residents of the town. And we should do that.
Right. I agree, yeah. So maybe we can make that happen. Because it's very difficult to read it online, to find it.
It is, it is hard to find. I know where it is now, but it's not easy.
Josh, you framed that perfectly.
All right, so we'll try to figure out how to get a mailing done.
Well, let me do this. Well, let me do this, Josh, let me make a motion that we should, I move that the Board of Selectmen publish its second statement in a way that does not affect the town's taxpayers any money. The information that is needed for eminent domain.
I'll second that.
Alright, just a point of clarification. So that means we'll communicate the statement in some means without drawing on public funds. Is that essentially what you're at, your?
That's correct.
I would support that. Any other discussion?
No, not here.
Okay, roll call vote. Josh, answer mine.
King can't die.
Black one night.
Are there any other questions in Citizens Forum? I did see one earlier.
I don't see any other questions. I see, you know, comments of support.
There's one comment here from Shannon Bianchi. As soon as it's going to easily videotape their computer screen and stream the live meetings live on YouTube or Facebook, if the board would grant that permission. Yeah, that's certainly one option. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I think we could figure out a better, maybe not an ideal solution, but an improved solution and have that ready for the next meeting. And let people know by the time of posting the meeting what that solution will be.
Hi, I just, this is Alice Court speaking again. I know you just voted to make the second statement available to the citizens of Nahat, but without drawing on any public funds. So what, and Peggy had volunteered to contribute and indicated that she thought that other people would be willing to contribute to having it mailed out to people. What would be the mechanics of making that occur then?
We do have a gift agreement in place. Do you, does anyone, Mark or Dan, could that mechanism be used, do you know?
I don't, this would be a question for Jeff, but I don't see why that money couldn't be. But to be sure, I would just consult with the donor to make sure that they have no issue with it. If they don't have an issue with it, well, I don't see a problem at all.
Alright, so I guess we'll figure out the mechanism and let people know. Yeah, so I guess, I guess we just gotta figure out what the best mechanism is and let anybody that would like to donate know what that mechanism is. Michelle Capano has a comment. Michelle, do you want to, your comment?
Sure, I just had put in the chat that I'd like to, I will donate to printing the second statement for the Board of Selectmen. So every resident has the opportunity to see it because it is an important document. And this is an important time in history in our town. So folks really should be able to participate in it. I think there's a group of, I would say there's an underserved community that doesn't have access to the internet or a computer. And they hear about this or they read in the newspaper, they talk to their friends on the beach. And so I think it's just really important to get the information out to people. If we can do it with our warrants, as we've done in prior years, and every household gets a document, then I think we should do it with this statement.
Excellent.
Alright, any other, any other comments?
Josh, I have one more comment or an and/or a question. So recently, new members were appointed to the Advisory and Finance Committee. And I'd like to know why those open positions weren't publicly made available to all residents so they could apply for those positions through the town moderator. I find it a little bit disingenuous that we've been hearing for a while that there was going to be some effort to organize these committees, identify the open roles, post them and make them available. And now having attended a meeting last week and having found out that new positions were available and no knowledge that this was being available to town residents, really, I'm very concerned about the process. Now, I recognize it is that committee is the responsibility of the town moderator, but I would look towards the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to make sure that it's an open and fair and transparent process when we do have open roles. These appointments, especially on FinCom, are treated like municipal employees, frankly. They're making recommendations that affect the monetary status of the community.
Yep, I mean, I share your concern, Michelle. It is an appointed board by the moderator. I think it's, I think part of the intent of the moderator appointment is to keep the FinCom, let's say somewhat independent from the Board of Selectmen. I don't know how, I don't know how those appointments were made. How people knew about the openings or submitted the openings or necessarily when people resigned from the board. So I agree that this should be more publicized. I don't know if the FinCom chairman contacts the moderator or you, Tony, or how that whole process worked.
I think what Michelle is saying, we should find out.
Moderator is notified, when someone submits a resignation, they notify the moderator and the town clerk. So then the moderator takes on some type of process, you know, probably similar to what's been happening in the town for many years now and part of the reason why we want to improve upon that process. So I share Michelle's comments.
So I, so my understanding now, having attended last week's FinCom meeting, there is another open role, another longstanding resident is retiring from his service. And nobody really knows about it unless you attended that meeting last week. And I think it warrants a discussion with the board and the moderator and the town administrator to make sure that all committees and boards, under each of your purview, you each have a selection of boards and committees that you're responsible for appointments, that there is proper agreement that if there's any opening, that it gets posted on the town website. Or you have communication vehicles available to broadly get this information out to folks so they know about it. Because you're missing out on an opportunity of residents to have valuable skills and experiences and will never be able to leverage that.
It's a good point. You know, applies across the board generically, you know, to all the committees, whether they're appointed by the moderator or administrator or the Board of Selectmen. So we'll have to put our heads together and find a process that's open in all cases, I guess. Not strictly a Board of Selectmen decision, but while I for one will do what I can to facilitate an improved process.
Thank you.
Any other, any other Citizen Forum? I don't see any, so.
I, just on, just one more thing on Michelle's comments. I spoke with the town clerk today about, you know, where we stand with a accurate list of current seats and open seats and term lengths of appointed members and ethics tests and open meeting law training and, you know, all of the above. And, you know, right now, the clerk's office is pretty busy with the upcoming elections and processing all the absentee voting requests. I think it's like over seven hundred. But it is something that, you know, her and I, you know, we're having continued discussions on. So again, I support what Michelle was saying there. I agree wholeheartedly and just wanted to give that update. Looks like you have one more, Cynthia?
Hi, Debbie Vander slice, can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, sorry Deb.
Is there Cynthia that needs to go first?
Oh, there's, it says Cynthia's iPad. I have a question, but go ahead.
Okay, that's, I'm on the telephone, so maybe somebody else needs to ask a question?
Why don't you go ahead.
I'm happy to go if you want me to.
Debbie, why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
Okay, well, I want to make a point. And that was, I noticed on one of the Swampscut Facebook pages the other day that they had this absolutely wonderful posting of every single open position. And obviously, it's a bigger town with athletic fields and such, so it wasn't just limited to, you know, town management or oversight type of appointments. It was everything from, you know, managing fields and things like that. But there were probably twenty listings on it and it also had tabs so people could apply online and submit resumes or whatever. And I thought it was pretty neat. I know not everybody's on Facebook, but certainly that would be a step in the right direction. I mean, to Michelle's point, we have a lot of talent in our town, I think. And I think it would be unwise to just randomly pick people who may not have the better credentials for these jobs. FinCom is one of the most important committees we have because of their oversight and involvement with budgeting and, you know, making recommendations. And so I think the thing with that committee is, I understand on one hand, the positions were filled ASAP because there's work to be done and the warrant needs to be finalized and put out. And I would hope that that's the only rationale as to why those positions were filled so quickly. But on the other hand, we want to make sure we have candidates who have fiscal experience or, you know, management experience or whatever. And, you know, I know four people were appointed and I think two of them probably don't have any financial expertise. So we want our best candidates. And I'm, to that point, I just am wondering if anybody, perhaps you, Tony, would know the answer. Is there any state requirement that jobs be posted? Certainly in the corporate workplace, there is a requirement that one posts jobs. It's illegal to do, you know, you have to do it. I believe it's probably true in the government workplace. I realize a lot of these jobs are volunteer jobs, but transparency and qualifications still remain vitally important. So I did try to look it up online and I could not find it. So does anybody have knowledge if there is a rule that a position might be, have to be posted for a certain period of time before the candidates are actually selected?
Dan might be able to answer that. I, I, I don't want to guess. I don't, I don't know if it would apply to appointment positions on committees and boards, but Dan, do you have an answer for that?
I know nothing that requires the advertisement of a position. Usually where that would come in is if a body is promoting or selecting someone to a position, well, that body would meet in open meeting and the open meeting laws would come into play. But in this case, the moderator is just himself, he's not, he's not a public body. So I don't know if anything from a legal perspective would require an advertisement of such a position. Now, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I don't, I don't know anything that requires it.
Yeah, even if it's not a requirement, I mean, that's the goal, Debbie. The goal is to, is to have a, you know, a dedicated location on our website and a process that would be, that would improve, you know, the awareness to the community when positions become available.
Right, I understand. So I'm happy to hear that we're going to strive for that in the future. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna unmute Cynthia. She has to be unmuted. I'm trying to anyway.
Unmute.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm just wondering, since the new parking stickers have been enacted, if we could do an evaluation of how it's working? Because in the old system, the former system, we had two stickers and one we put on my car and one we saved and laminated for if our children came. And we never exceeded our two stickers. But in the event that our children and grandchildren came, we would have a place for them to just go to the beach. Or sometimes I have a friend whose daughter has dystonia and she is in a handicap van and needs special parking. We could put that sticker on her van and go to the war so she could enjoy a day at the beach or the ocean. So I'm wondering, since this year, we went when my daughter came and the police said, "You cannot have a sticker this year." And it's new. Since the new, the new system, we've been able to go and say, okay, my kids are coming for the weekend. The first year, they would give us three-day pass. Then they would say, oh, you have to come day by day. So we did. And then this year, it's, no, you can't have a pass. So I just want to know, how are my children and grandchildren going to come and visit me for a day at the beach if we can't facilitate that? And the policeman at the station said, well, laminate one of your passes. And that's what we did formally, but now with the number of our license plate on the sticker, we aren't doing that because we are trying to follow the rules. So tell me, how should we proceed? Should we save one back and laminate it like we used to do? Or what should we do? I mean, I want my kids to come and my grandkids to visit and go to the beach. So what do you want us to do? What's the right thing to do?
So listen, I appreciate, I completely appreciate your, your comments there. As you heard, I don't know, were you on earlier when we were talking about the parking issues in town?
Yes, but I thought that was more about the fees and so forth. So I just waited for my turn to talk.
Alright. It's all kind of intermingled together. This year, you know, doing temporary parking passes up at the station have been limited because of the extraordinary amount of non-resident parking issues that we've had in town this year. So it's not, it's not typical. Usually, you know, we do have temporary passes that we give out. And any, any normal scenario, I would highly encourage you to utilize that. This year's been unique because of the coronavirus impacts on parking in town and non-residents in the area. I, you know, we aren't going to encourage laminating stickers because that would contradict the, the point of having, you know, plate numbers listed on the sticker.
And yeah, that's what the police officer asked us to do. He said, well, you could laminate one. And I'm like, well, we already put them on our cars because they have our license plate. But, I mean, we would happily save one back. It's the same number, we're not exceeding a number.
You know, I would, I would probably, I would, I would encourage, you know, if, in the random scenarios or weekends if in the random scenarios or weekends that you have that extra, those extra cars calling the town hall or the police station, usually we can try to accommodate people, whether it be at the town hall or at the school or in a lot like that, and then utilizing carpooling. You know, we try to be as helpful as possible to the residents and their family. It, it does get tricky, you know, when we're dealing with, you know, it's hard for the officers to know if it's a family member's car or if it's a non-resident, you know, just trying to park in a non-resident area of town, so.
We went to the police station and we said, "It was my daughter." He said, "Take one of your stickers and laminate it," and gave it to her. I'm, I'm just wondering, is that what we should do in the future? Because we are trying to do the right thing. And I want my grandchildren to be feeling comfortable coming here. And I want my children to feel comfortable coming here.
Well, why don't, why don't you, um, why don't we have a, a conversation, um, you know, tomorrow or the next, or, or, or the next day at the town hall or by phone? I can follow up with you if you shoot me an email, your contact info.
Okay, with whom am I speaking? Because I have written to the Board of Selectmen three times, uh, you know, so I just want to know, where do I go?
This is Tony, this is Tony Barletta, I'm the town administrator. And my email is abarletta@nahat.org. And if you don't mind, also CCing, um, the administrative assistant Bobby Joe Blair. And her email is bblair@nahat.org.
Thank you so much.
It's, uh, B L A I R.
Thank you.
But, you know, this is Josh Antrim, uh, one of the Selectmen speaking. You know, it may be a scenario where you have to shuttle back and forth. I, you know, I have the same situation with friends or, or relatives visiting without stickers. And, you know, I'll, I'll drive them down to the wharf, I'll drive back, pick up a few more people.
Okay, Josh, what do I do?
Park one car at the, at the location.
Josh, what do I do when my friend has a daughter who has dystonia? And she is totally handicapped from her head to her toes and she needs a handicapped van? And we used to go to the police department and they would give us a pass and we would go to the wharf. And her mom would like let the van down and she could roll out onto the wharf and have a day. We can't shuttle back and forth in my CRV. She is in a wheelchair and needs a handicapped van. What do I do if I can't go to the police? What do I do?
I'm, I'm sure we can make an accommodation in a special situation like that. But, um, you know, generically speaking, um, I think you heard the chief. And I, I, I don't, you know, I hate to be the, you know, the messenger, but, you know, you heard the chief earlier. I mean, they're running ragged trying to enforce, um, Nahat's parking law. So, um, you know, I, I recognize in the past it was easier to get, um, guest parking passes and stuff. But, uh, with the current situation, it's going to take a little bit of sacrifice. Not, not in the case of, um, your handicapped relative, but, uh, I'm sure we can make some accommodation for that. But, um, you know, given the current circumstances, you know, it, it might be tougher than, than in the past. And I, I hate to be the, you know, the messenger of maybe the message you didn't want to hear, but, um, I think there's some reality to that. So that's, I'll just say that's, that's what I do.
So I'll follow up with Cynthia. Um, hopefully she's, uh, if you're still in there, just shoot us an email and we'll, we'll try to figure out a way to accommodate your scenario, your situation. And as far as, um, other comments on the chat, that's all I have.
I have a text saying there's a question from Bonnie Orlando.
Oh, yep, going back up. Should the Board of Selectmen's statement be updated with the three recent court decisions?
I guess I would say, to the extent they're relative to the second statement, which is about the financial effects. Offhand, I don't know if they are or not, but if they are, we can do that update. If they're not, they would be part of, not that statement, but maybe some other information that we're sharing.
Okay, I think that's it. I must have missed something.
Alright, well, um, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor? Josh Antrim, aye?
Jean can't be aye.
I love you're still there, Mark. Looks like you're muted.
Oh, you got two out of the three.
Yeah, that's good enough. We got a majority.
Okay, alright, good night, everyone.
Uh, do you need us to? Do you need, do you need us to vote to adjourn?
Yeah, go, hey, there's no reason not to. So go ahead.
Okay. I want aye.
Adjourn.
Dan Bianchi, aye.
I think you lost, Dan, I think you may have lost quorum a while ago.
Yeah, I think, I think we're alright. I'm not so concerned about it.
Yeah, if we need a quorum of all of us, we may have lost it a while ago.
No, we're fine. Three and a half hours, I think, is justifiable.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Okay, thanks. Bye.
Alright, good night.
Good night.